All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Charlottesville City School Board Meeting. It is June 10th, and we are so happy to have everybody here. So if you will please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you take roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Present.
Ms. McKeever?
Here.
Ms. Perrier? Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
I think you forgot me.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Kraft.
I'm here.
Sorry.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion as we do have a couple of members potentially joining us remotely.
I move that Ms. Bryson Morsberger be allowed to participate virtually due to personal reasons.
I second.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to allow for Ms. Perrier to also join us remotely, and Mr. Johnson as well, since he's our school board student rep.
All right, so we'll just add, make that all one motion? That sounds good.
If you'll accept my friendly amendment. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you take roll? Or vote on that, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier? Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of our agenda.
I move the approval of our agenda.
Second.
And we will continue to have the clerk call for a vote on this, since we do have some virtual members. So, Madam Clerk, will you please take a vote or roll on that?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier? Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Are we able to hear Ms. Bryson Morsberger okay? Okay? Or maybe, Lashandra, if you could give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
I can hear you all, can you hear me okay? There's a hissing on my end, but I can hear you.
Moving on to our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. So we will have an opportunity here. We do have some people joining us in the auditorium for our first in-person kind of board meeting. So we appreciate those that are showing up. Lovely to see you behind your masks. I can sense their smiles and thumbs up, so thank you. And then we will also look to see if we have people signed up. So let's start with in-person. And please state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, my name is Chris Meyer, 124 Oaklawn Court. I'm a member of the Administrative Committee for the CCS Joint PTO Reopening Fund, and co-chair of the Jackson Valley Elementary PTO. We are here tonight, or I am here tonight, to report for a final time on the collective effort from the CCS PTOs to raise funds for virtual learning and reopening during the 2020-2021 academic year. As you already know and were emailed, we raised over $165,000 to assist students, families, and teachers and schools. The fund committed to equity and meeting the individual needs of every learner, every day, everyone, by applying an equity formula to the distribution of funds raised. Overall, the fund expenditures are represented by three main categories: teaching and learning materials during virtual learning, family support, and return to learn in person. This week, we published a final report to share how the money was spent and lessons learned from this experience, and can be found on the website, We have many people we want to say thank you. Again, thank you for making this extraordinary effort happen, including the more than 200 individuals who contributed to the fund. Every gift, whether it was $10 or $25,000, of course, mattered. We want to acknowledge the substantial donations from local philanthropists, local businesses, and with the Hutt Foundation, the Grace D. Riggs Foundation, Boyd &amp; Sype PLC, Tiger Fuel, Sonia Smith, the Bama Works Fund of Dave Dathue's band, and the Smith Family Always Am Fund. We want to thank the Charlottesville Area Community Foundation and CCS staff, some of them over here, for their partnerships, along with the CCS principals and leadership staff at each school who dispersed the funds. We know that philanthropic contributions play an important role in helping teachers, students, and families succeed. We are grateful to those who chose to invest in public schools during this challenging year, and hope this inspires the greater Charlottesville community to continue investing in our city's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in the auditorium that would like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you.
We do have one person who has their hand raised online.
All right, great, Mr. Cuomo, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll attempt to chime them in. My last name is S.A.U.L., and I will ask that they unmute. This is the first time we're trying this, so my advanced apologies if this is not a clear sound. But let's see if Ms. Saul is...
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, teachers, students, and community members. Each year, we know attrition occurs, but however, I am concerned that the gains we made in hiring a diverse staff two years ago, when I started, are dwindling rapidly. So what do we do now? What can be done to keep those highly qualified teachers that you chose to hire and recruit, especially those teachers of color? When a teacher shares concerns and seeks counsel on how to address issues, the space should be welcoming, safe, and allow for brave conversations. It is my hope and plea that the goal of the board, division, and school leadership is to welcome communication, especially when concerning equity, racism, and collaboration. Should there be hoops that are necessary to be jumped over for months before there is a move to seek to understand and change? If we, as a division, are not prepared to do the work towards real equity, diversity, and inclusion, then we need to interrogate why we are given the privilege to hold the positions we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We do have some other hands raised in the gallery for our attendees online. I'm going to unmute. The name is listed as Winter Broadhurst. You should be able to unmute at this time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much for hosting this board meeting and allowing for public comment. My name is Winter Broadhurst, and I'm the volunteer coordinator at JABA, and I manage the Friends and Schools Helping Mentor Program, where we match volunteer mentors with public school students, one-on-one or in small groups, to assist them academically and emotionally. Of course, over the last year, we moved to an entirely virtual format using Zoom and working with parents directly. Our mentors are eager to serve students again in the fall, and we are hopeful to be able to resume an in-person format, as well as offer a virtual option. We are hoping for guidance from the school board on if volunteers will be able to return to the schools for the fall semester of school year 2021 to 2022. Do you have any insight at all at this time if volunteers will be able to return onsite? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up in the attendee gallery, the name listed is Jordan Johnson. Jordan, you should be able to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Cuomo. Good evening, school board members. My name is Jordan Johnson. I'm the City School Yard Garden Program Director with Cultivate Charlottesville. I wanted to provide the board with an update to programming that Cultivate and community partners have taken on during the past 16 months of the COVID-19 pandemic. At the beginning of the pandemic, we heard from community members the importance of school meals to address food insecurity and the concern about meal access during breaks in the school service. A group of community partners, including Cultivate, PB&amp;J Fund, Frontline Foods, Charlottesville Community Cares, and others came together to cover school meal, or student meal distribution during school breaks when CCS was not serving meals. Over the past year, we've partnered with six local restaurants, sourced 17,000 fresh meals for students while school wasn't in session. Cultivate Food Justice Network partners pulled together to provide a bridge for service during the challenging time, investing over $100,000 in the distribution of these meals. Now, Cultivate and our partner organizations need to return to the work and programming, and our organizational funds and time will need to be redirected back to our programs, and we will not be able to continue the school break meal distribution. We're excited that federal support for all meals from school nutrition programs has been extended through next year. It continues to be critically important to utilize school meals to build equity for our students facing food insecurity. The school district has been so innovative in building a completely new system to respond to community need and ensure food access when school was in session over the past year. They've done a great job at altering school meals from in-school to community distribution. And with this well-established system of meal distribution throughout the community and the ability to be reimbursed for this work, we would like to support CCS in being the bridge for student equity during school breaks. We have been in contact with Carlton Jones to express the importance in continuing to serve students throughout school breaks, and he's looking into the capacity. We're passing along all our documents and information on how we went about this process during the breaks, and wanted to update the board on this as well. Please reach out to Cultivate with any questions or concerns about how we can best ensure that students don't go without food during school breaks. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, at this time, there are no additional attendees with their hands raised. I know we typically give 20 to 30 seconds for last calls, and I know you always mention there's another time to speak at the end of the meeting.
Yes, we'll go ahead and give a few seconds here and see if anybody else signs up or jumps in the room. Thank you, Mr. Cuomo. I think we will move on. And yes, there is another opportunity towards the end of the meeting for community member comment. Just noticing now that we do have an opportunity, or we have on the agenda comments from the board, so I don't know if anybody feels the need to make a comment right now. We do have an opportunity towards the end of the meeting, if everybody is in agreement to keep moving. Thank you. All right, so I will now entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda, please.
So move. Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have one quick question. On the consent agenda, the personnel recommendations, were there any? When I open it, it says there it's not approved for review yet.
That means you are not logged in?
Yeah, you're in the public one, maybe.
It's under the, so you need to go to, you need to log in to look at the personnel recommendations. So there's a separate school board, ESB link?
Okay, I thought I was on it, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, or discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier? Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to items for discussion. And our first item is the local plan for the gifted and annual review. Mr. Henderson?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, Dr. Odie will present the plan for virtual learning next year, grades three through 12.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson, actually, we're gonna start with our gifted presentation. So good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, and Mr. Henderson. Tonight, we would like to share with you and recommend that the board take action on the local plan for the gifted and annual review for 2021 through 2024. Bev Catlin, Coordinator of Instruction, will present these documents to you at this time. Ms. Catlin?
Thank you, Dr. Odie. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Henderson. Again, it's so nice to have you there, Mr. Henderson, thank you. This evening, I bring to you two items: the annual review of the gifted program and a revised local plan for the education of the gifted. But I'd like to begin by thanking members of the Gifted Advisory Committee, and Dr. Kraft, our school board representative, for being, for their ongoing support as we completed both projects. Their comments and questions had us pause and reflect on our work as we strive to best serve our learners. The next slide. For the annual review, we delineated four areas of focus, identified accomplishments in each area, and set goals for the next school year. Now, two slides ahead. Maybe. Thank you, that's perfect. Our accomplishments this year have to start with the hard work of our teachers. Whether working virtually or in-person, the gifted resource teachers used a variety of formats to offer students rigorous learning opportunities. This included our very popular enrichment boards, that were enjoyed by all students. In addition, gifted resource teachers worked closely with classroom teachers to collaboratively plan rigorous learning experiences that enrich student learning. I'm also happy to share that by the end of this summer, a cohort of 17 teachers will have earned their endorsement in gifted education. A huge thank you goes to these teachers who completed these requirements during the pandemic, and to the University of Virginia and the School Division for supporting their efforts. Finally, in spring 2021, another accomplishment was the division implemented an inclusive gifted identification process that supports our pathways for gifted education through talent development. We considered over 2,600 students in third grade and beyond for gifted identification. We referred all students who were enrolled before March 1st, attended the council, acquired nationally normed test data. As a result of our process, 86% of Charlottesville City School students in grades three through 11 are now identified gifted. Looking at the data by subgroups, we find that African-Americans make up 36% of the student population in grades three through 11, and they make up 33% of those identified as gifted. Asian students make up 7% of the population, and 8% of those identified as gifted. For students identified as Hispanic, those figures are 14 and 13%, respectively. Caucasians make up 42% of the student population in those grades, and they make up 46% of those identified as gifted. For our first year of implementation, and doing this in a year of a pandemic, an inclusive identification process has had us make great strides in having an equitable representation of students identified as gifted. Our goals for next year will have us continuing to provide classroom teachers with professional learning around the principles of differentiation through co-planning and co-teaching. We also will implement our pathways for gifted services at Beaufort School. There, we will respond to the needs of middle school students as we support the developing of their talents. And finally, staff and the Gifted Advisory Committee will use multiple approaches to gather feedback on gifted services with this new model. We want to hear from teachers, from students, and from parents. That data will help us acknowledge our strengths by areas for improvement and set goals for the future. Next slide. Another major accomplishment this year was revising Charlottesville's local plan for the education of the gifted, so that it reflects the changes we have made in our gifted services and our identification process. State regulations require every school division to have a plan that follows a very specific format. For two years, the gifted program staff and the gifted advisory committee worked diligently on updating this plan, step by step. There were revisions throughout, so I wanted to highlight some of those changes for you this evening. Next slide. First, our definition of giftedness was changed to match our pathways in gifted education. It now reads: "Charleston City Schools views giftedness through a lens of talent development. We believe all students are talented, and we cultivate their potential through a collaborative, high-quality differentiated instruction. We recognize that the need of students to think and perform at high levels is important for cultivating their potential for advanced learning. From grades three and beyond, we identify students with aptitudes in English and mathematics." During the revision process, we set new goals and objectives for each of the six state mandated areas. And I'd like to share this with you. Next slide. For identification, sure, our identification process continues to focus on developing talents in a diverse group of students. For delivery of services, we will work with classroom teachers to provide students with appropriately challenging educational opportunities. In the curriculum and instruction area, our focus is differentiation, whether it is differentiated curriculum, differentiated instructional strategies, or differentiated resources for students and teachers. Next slide. For professional development, we will help all staff members at the school grow in their knowledge and skills in developing the talents of all learners. For equitable representation of students, staff will analyze qualitative and quantitative data to be sure we are supporting a diverse group of students. And the goals for parent and community involvement ask us to continue educating the community on talent development as a framework for gifted education. Next slide. The revised local plan supports the division's pathways for gifted education through our talent development framework. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. The only request I have, if you'd mind, could you send the data that you, as far as the breakdown of the kids that were identified, please?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, that was a question I wanted to ask, but she's gonna send it to you.
I have a question. When you were saying 86% of the students that applied in grades three through 11 were referred or identified, I'm sorry, is that, can you break that down when you send the data, or if you can now? Is that, was that, what, how did it break down along like age or grade? Just trying to see where it falls, the 86% who were identified.
I can certainly give you that data by grade levels, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. After, you know, we're still kind of working through the new program. So far, is there any changes or suggestions, just, you know, already that you would make at this point, or you want to kind of wait to let it run? Usually, it's three years, and you kind of get a trend type of thing, but I'm just curious.
I think with this year, it certainly changed the flow. And our gifted resource teachers were not able to go into classrooms and work directly with teachers and students. They still did amazing work and provided those differentiated experience. So I would say, you know, in some ways, we haven't had a three-year block of time, and we will just need more time. The feedback we're getting has been very positive. The classroom teachers have been very inviting to the gifted resource teachers. The co-teaching has worked very, very well across all of the elementary schools and through Walker. And so I think we are absolutely at a great start, but I still think we're at a start. And the next year, we'll be moving that into Beaufort. And we're still in the process of designing that with Beaufort as to exactly how that would look.
I would like to ask Dr. Kraft how the advisory board is doing, and what you see, what kind of discussions that you all have had around the, we're talking right now not about the local plan, but also about the local plan and this review.
So just generally, what?
Yeah, I think, I mean, one of the things when I was sitting in the room is just very helpful to me to understand that, you know, what the conversations revolved around. And I was wondering what you, you know, how the meetings were, and how robust the conversations were, and...
You know, I think that, as Ms. Catlin said, this year was so unusual, you know, and I think trying to just get to understand how it was working, you know, that was part of, I think, what was happening, at least for the first part of the year. You know, just how is it working in the virtual environment? And, you know, I would say that, you know, one of the themes, you know, it's a very tough thing to do, and I think one of the themes that probably will be discussed going forward when the kids go back is, you know, there are kids, you know, we're focusing on sort of bringing up lots more kids and a more diverse pool of kids. And then there are those kids, you know, a small number of kids who are, you know, at sort of the, whatever, the gifted 1%, 2% of the population. And so, you know, what's happening also with those kids? What's gonna be happening going forward with those kids? You know, and how are they gonna be, how are their needs gonna be served? That's a small number. And so I think our focus, the focus has really been on implementing this new model and on the coordination of the gifted specialists with the classroom teachers. And I think a lot of, a lot of the conversation has just been about that. You know, what is it like, how does it work? You know, are there any concerns with that? But it's, it's a weird year, you know, it's just a weird year. And I, you know, I think we're also gonna need to talk about, once the kids are back in person, you know, how has this past year changed what we may need to do going forward next year? So, I mean, that's, that's my comment. I don't know if that's enough.
That's helpful, thank you. I also just want to say that my experience just as a mom of elementary school kids I also just want to say that my experience just as a mom of elementary school kids this year with respect to the push-in model was very positive for, you know, my kids and I just, they always looked forward to that enrichment time when the student, when the teacher came in virtually or now in person. And so, you know, to make school more like that is actually the goal, in my opinion. So I just hope that we can keep replicating that and engaging our students where they are, no matter where they are, not necessarily, you know, identifying them as gifted, I know is required by the state, but just meeting them where they are is, with this enriching activity is, was something that was really benefited all of my students, so. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one more question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if I missed it somewhere, but we're talking about just the identification part. And a big thing with the, that New York Times article was the outcomes and how children are, you know, in two different tiers and different in one school. So we've identified 86%. We've identified more diverse students. What is the outcome? What does that mean? When kids go into middle school from elementary school, are they in more unlevel, I believe that's what they're called, classes? What is the outcome? What is different now, other than the identification, as far as student trajectory or the classes that they're taking, you know, when they move up?
So many of those decisions are made at the individual school level in terms of the courses they're offering, and I know that many of the schools are moving to unlevel courses. I guess, for me, when I think about gifted education right now, I actually think about two parts. One is the services we offer, and the other is the identification. And as, as the board knows, we began this process by examining our services and coming up with a new model for how to serve students that had us moving into classrooms. During that process, with Dr. Atkins' support, we went to the state and said, what do we have to do about gifted identification? What does the state require? And we got some very clear direction from the state that we needed to continue to identify for gifted, and we were, we could not identify everybody. So then our task this last year was to say, we're going to serve all students who are in the general education classroom when we as gifted resource teachers are going into those rooms. Who are those students who will be in that classroom? And those would be the ones that we will be identifying as gifted. And so that, I can tell you, has turned out, our process, this is the first year of using it, looks like it has worked, that we have identified the students who will be in the classroom when the gifted resource teachers are in there working with students. So what does that mean? Again, the students who are in the classroom when we are there, they're not being pulled for an intervention, or they're not in another special classroom for all or part of their day, will have those experiences with a gifted resource teacher. How that will look at the middle school level, I am not exactly sure. That's, again, part of what we are planning right now, how we are going to support, because I think it's going to be slightly different when we get to the secondary level than it is at the elementary level. But that's the planning that's going on. I hope that answers your question.
It got me, I'm a little closer to understanding, but I'll think of some more follow-up. Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? Just a couple comments. I would love, and I know I'm part of the Equity Committee, I'm working on the dashboard, and I've missed the last couple of meetings, but I know I had put in a request, and I hope that there's the potential or possibility for gifted identification and that to be included into the Equity Dashboard, so that we can kind of track and see, excuse me, what's going on with that. So I don't know if you had heard that, or if you can pass that on.
Absolutely.
That would be great. And then also, as far as meeting kids where they are and kids having the opportunity to be part of or exposed to some of these gifted opportunities, just within the last three weeks, I was speaking to my daughter who's graduated, but she shared, and I don't remember how the conversation came up, but she was recollecting that she, when she was at Walker, I think we were talking about different instructors, that she happened to be in a room adjacent to a gifted instructor's classroom, and that, and she was not in that class, but she had a lot of friends and classmates who were, and the teacher invited my daughter in when they had an author of a book that they were reading come to speak to the students. And I had never heard her share this, and so we're talking about a 19-year-old reflecting back on when she was in fifth or sixth grade, and she happened to be classmates with Mr. Wade's daughter. And she remembered the teacher by name, she remembered the author, and she just lit up. And, I mean, that is a memory, again, and it was just here, 10 years later, she's able to share it and just vividly describe that and what that meant to her. And I think that's what, and I hope, and I believe that that's what we, as a division, you know, that's what our goals are, and as far as offering these opportunities to all these kids, whether they're part of that, and again, our model is changing and how we're doing that is changing, but here, that teacher, who is still with us, you know, thought a little bit outside the box and invited her in and probably some other students. And it really, it means a lot to me, and I know it meant and continues to mean a lot to my daughter. So thank you to all of you teachers who do that, who see the kids and invite them in and include them in these opportunities, because you never know.
Right.
What kind of, you know, that experience and what impact it might have on a student lifelong. So just wanted to share that, so thank you.
You know, I think this is, this example is perfect, you know, in really explaining why we made the changes that we made and why we're doing it this way now. You know, that she had that opportunity. Now, this was a teacher giving her the opportunity sort of out of the box, but now those opportunities will be in the box. And I think it's wonderful. I loved hearing, I love hearing that story. Makes me feel like we're really doing the right thing.
And if that teacher happens to be tuned in right now, listening to the meeting, we happen to jog by each other almost every morning, so that's all I'll say, is when I wave to you the next time.
Well, I think, I would just add, you know, one of the compliments for our gifted resource teachers is, they were asked, the enrichment boards, I've mentioned to you, were just so popular this year with the students during that asynchronous time, and they were asked to create an enrichment board for the last day of school. And they were like, okay, we can do that. But I think that's just reaching out to all of the students with these critical and creative thinking activities that are really engaging and inspiring to them. So that's what we will continue to do. You.
I just want to add a comment, Madam Chair. I'm hoping that, Beth, that, and I know this was an unusual year, when you said it was 33% of African-American students that were identified. I am hoping that in the next two or three years, we will continue to see that number grow among Black and Brown children.
Exactly, yes. And remember, it was, they have 36% of the students in that grade level, and then they were 33% of the students who were identified gifted. So it's only a three, it's a 3% difference, but significantly different than what it was before.
Okay, so I'm hoping to see that grow even more as we continue to use this, this model that we adopted.
Yeah.
So thanks to all the teachers for their great work in this unusual year.
When you send that data, and if it's not too much work, would you mind sending, and I know it's comparing different numbers or whole groups, the identification from prior years as far as the breakdown of?
Absolutely.
I mean, do you know what I'm...
Let me see what I can pull from that.
Do you understand what I just didn't say?
Yes, absolutely. It will be significantly different.
Thank you.
And I have one more, I'm so sorry. I have one more question, and maybe it's for follow-up for our next check-in about this, but I'd like us to think about how we measure outcomes of the success, because we are identifying students, and that number is going up, but it can't just be the identification that goes up, the outcome has to change, because, you know, the highlights of the article were about how it's a two-tier system for African-American students or students of color versus white students. So the identification is great, all of this is great, but if the outcomes aren't changing, then the system, we haven't addressed the issue. So I would like us to think about how we're measuring outcomes, whether it's numbers, metrics, student outcomes, college attendance, graduation rates, untiered classes, we have to start measuring for an outcome to see how we're doing.
All right, next.
Madam Chair, if I could have a few moments regarding this topic. Tonight is actually Ms. Catlin's last time that she will be presenting the gifted local plan to all of you. Ms. Catlin was the coordinator of instruction that involved serving ESL and their families, ESL students and their families, gifted students and their families, avid students and their families, as well as liaison of helping us through the class program over many, many years. So she wore many hats with confidence, and she was very effective and efficient. And not only will she be missed, but her moment in the spotlight, in my mind, is the movement that we're taking right now to make gifted education more inclusive. And her hard work, her work with her teachers will make a difference for our students. So thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe that's the bonus of doing a school board presentation in your last month before retirement, thank you. And is the board going to approve the local plan?
Yes, we are taking, I will entertain, yeah, thank you. I will entertain a motion on this, please.
For move for approval?
A second.
So let me just clarify, so that that motion is approve the local plan? I just wanted to...
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay, all right. For the gifted annual review, 2021 through 2024. Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson-Moursburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Poyer?
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Catlin. Thank you for all your work. All right. Next, we will be discussing the 2021-2022 Title I Federal Consolidated Application. Mr. Henderson?
Dr. Hurdie, are you going to present the local plan?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, board members, and Mr. Henderson. Now, we would like to share with you and recommend for approval that the board take action on the Title I Federal Consolidated Application. We have with us tonight Patrick Farrell, Coordinator of Intervention and Supports, who will present this information to you at this time. Mr. Farrell?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Henderson, members of the board. Each year, we submit an application to the Department of Education for approval for not just actually Title I, but Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV programming. And so basically, the allocations have remained readily pretty steady each year, which we're very kind of fortunate, and especially during the last year, and we're anticipating the same for the upcoming year. The allocations will actually be released sometime in August or September for each of the programs. I'm ready to answer any questions if you have any.
Just for the public, if you could just briefly say Title I is for this program, Title II is for that, just for the public.
Sure, yeah. Title I programming is for students at risk, and so we primarily use that to address students and support school-wide programs for literacy and math and family engagement. Title II programming is for supporting teacher performance, and so we primarily use that for reducing class lives. So we use that, those funds to add additional three teachers to our title schools. And then Title III is for English language learners. Ms. Catlin has worked with that program for many years. And then Title IV is for academic enhancements and student supports, and we primarily use that funds to support our positive school climate and a lot of our mental wellness programming.
For closure, I needed those two, so I needed a refresher. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is an action item, folks.
Yes, I will move that we approve the 2021-2022 Title I Federal Consolidated Application.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson-Moursburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Poyer?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have our return-to-learn virtual options, 2021-2022. Mr. Henderson?
I think Dr. Rose is going to present this now.
Thank you.
Tonight, we would like to share with you our plan for fall reopening here in CCS. Several of our building administrators are accompanying me this evening for this presentation, and I will introduce them momentarily. Next slide. Here you will see that we will give an overview of what I'll share tonight. I'll start by discussing the 2021-2022 school opening. Then our administrators will come before you to share what our virtual options are that will be offered at their levels. After that, I'll come before you again to look at additional considerations for virtual instruction. And finally, we will share information about what successful virtual instruction looks like and talk about next steps. Next slide. As was shared in the April 1st school board meeting, we will follow the pre-COVID in-person attendance model in 2021-2022. We will be in-person five days a week for all grade levels following mandates, as outlined in Senate Bill 1303, which states that Virginia school divisions must offer in-person instruction five days a week. We do need to ensure that we are meeting the 180-day and 990-hour requirement, and that can be accomplished by having students come in-person each day. We will continue to follow Governor and CDC guidelines and remain informed about updates throughout the year. Senate Bill 1303 states that Virginia schools may offer virtual instruction to some students. So we have worked to develop what CCS virtual would look like. Our goal, however, is to have students return to in-person learning in 2021-2022. Next slide. As a brief... As a brief overview of what CCS virtual would look like, we plan to utilize a current staff member to serve as the CCS virtual liaison. This person would coordinate the program and ensure that appropriate training occurs for staff and communicate with the homeschools of students in the program, in addition to other tasks that may surface regarding the program. Cameras would be required to be on during CCS virtual instruction in 2021-2022. And we are planning to have CCS virtual offered at grades three through eight on an application basis. We want to have strong teachers selected for these positions, as well as have interested families participate in an application process. These applications will be reviewed by building principals to determine if the child qualifies for virtual instruction based on certain criteria. We do have a link here to share a preview of what the application would likely look like. And if we could show that. For instance, and we'll just, if we can just scroll through it a little bit, I'll just talk about a few of the things that are there. There's identifying information, questions about where the application, questions about where the child is in school this year, what school they go to, why the family is requesting virtual, et cetera. We plan to post our finalized application on our website for interested families to complete. This is still in draft version. Now, at this time, I invite our administrators, Summer Thompson, Principal of Johnson Elementary School, Dr. Adam Hastings, Principal of Walker Upper Elementary School, Seda Deloria, and Pam Davis, Assistant Principals at Beaufort, and Dr. Eric Irazieri, Principal of Charlottesville High School, in that order, to come forward and share what CCS virtual would entail at their levels. Ms. Thompson.
All right, good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson, and everyone who is watching tonight. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present to you our proposed model for virtual learning at the elementary. So first, just a reminder that there is no virtual option for our pre-K through second graders. Everything that I'm gonna share tonight is only for our third, at least from my perspective, our third and fourth graders who will be attending virtually from Charlottesville Elementary Schools. So, at this time, we're planning on allocating one third-grade teacher and one fourth-grade teacher for all of our virtual children across the entire city. As far as who the teachers of those classes would be, as Dr. Odi said, they would, that would be application-based and they would come from any school throughout the city. So, that means that if you are a Johnson student who is applying for this program, you would not necessarily have a Johnson teacher. And I want to reemphasize just this idea that at the elementary level, we are no longer having individual virtual schools within each school. It's one large virtual program across the entire city. Our virtual students would come together from all of our elementary schools as part of this program. But with that said, we do understand the need for the maintenance of some sort of connection to their homeschool. You guys know if, you know, if any of our kids have been a Johnson baby currently, pass, or whatever, they're always a Johnson baby. And I know that's how all of our elementary principals feel. And so, we've got some provisions that we'll put in place to make sure that our children who are participating virtually will still feel connected to their homeschool. One of those would be just that they would continue to receive the all-school communication. So, they would know, for example, when our African-American Heritage Night would take place, so that they could participate. And then, finally, again, so student-teacher ratio, we want to make sure that we're setting up our kids and our teachers for success. So, that 19 to 1 ratio that you're seeing is the lowest maximum student-teacher ratio within all of our city schools. Next slide, please, Leslie. So, our virtual students would have access to all of the special programming that is available to our in-person students. And that includes classes with specials teachers, our gifted resource push-in and ISIM teacher, and our school counselor. And then, the school counselor would also be available for small groups and then, as needed, for acute situations. All of the support personnel referenced would come from across all of our city elementary schools. That would be determined between building-level principals, division-level admin, as well as the content coordinators. And to some extent, would be based on the number of in-person sections at each school. And then, finally, access to specialized resources, for example, a math specialist or a reading specialist, that may be available to the extent that's practical. Next slide, please, Leslie. Thank you. So, our elementary model virtually would operate the same hours as our in-person will. And at the elementary, that's from 8:00 to 2:30. So, that's for our third and fourth graders. And so, this next bullet is a change from how we have been doing virtual school. So, I want to be really clear about this new expectation, because I want to make sure our virtual families know what they're signing up for, for this program. So, the expectation for our virtual program this coming year is that students would be logged in all day for mostly synchronous instruction. And that is because the VDOE is no longer allowing for long chunks of asynchronous time, like we've been able to count in the past as instructional hours. So, any asynchronous time, other than your typical lunch break, your recess break, that would sort of have to mirror what would be happening in an in-person classroom. So, for example, in an in-person classroom, you might have two children who are not directly interacting with the teacher, but they're over to the side working collaboratively on a project. We would want to see the same thing in the virtual setting, except they would be in a breakout room, so that they would still be available to come back to the teacher if necessary, or the teacher could call them back as necessary. And then, I also want to say too, that it doesn't mean that every second of the day would involve screen time. A student might be moved into a breakout room to read a self-selected text or to work on problems in their math workbook or something like that. So, it wouldn't all be screen time, but they would still be logged in so that they could have easy access to the teacher and the teacher could have easy access to them. So, again, I share all of this because it is an increase in the amount of synchronous time and an increase in the amount potentially that kids will be engaged with a screen. In order to maintain equity of opportunity, our virtual students will have the same amount of time dedicated to each content area as our in-person children have. And they will also be following the same pacing guide as our in-person children do, so that if, let's say, our third graders are working on adding fractions with like denominators in in-person, then our virtual children will be doing the same thing at about the same time. All right, so again, we're gonna continue with Canvas, whether we liked it or not. We became very, very facile with Canvas this year. We certainly don't want to lose that, because there are a lot of benefits for that, both for in-person and virtual learners. So, that will be the platform for our virtual learners for next year. And then, finally, and this is important for our families who are considering this virtual option to know, the VDOE allows for students to begin the year virtually. And it allows, there's a provision that allows them to transfer back to in-person learning. However, the opposite is not true. Once they transfer out of virtual learning back to in-person, the expectation is that they will stay in in-person. And then, likewise, if they begin the year as an in-person student, there will not be the option for them to transfer into that virtual program, unless there was some potentially like extreme medical need that necessitated it. So, in sum, there are definitely some logistics that we are still gonna need to work out as we go along the way. But I am confident that our elementary schools can work together to have a really awesome virtual program for all of our virtual third and fourth graders. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hastings. Thank you.
Can I ask just before that, why the choice was made for K2, not, pre-K2, not having any virtual experience?
I'm gonna let Dr. Odi answer that.
It seems.
I mean, I have my own thoughts, but all of it.
What we find is that our youngest learners really benefit most from in-person instruction, that foundational instruction. When we think about teaching young children how to read virtually, there are challenges virtually where that in-person instruction is the best. And I will say that we haven't experienced many interested families for in-person, excuse me, virtual instruction, based on the survey that we did submit.
As a parent of a first grader who just did virtual learning for nine months, I'm like, you know, I understand the benefits of being in-person. And I recognize that if there are families who have third and fourth graders who want to go virtual, there are no doubt families of K, pre-K2, who would like to go. It just kind of seems arbitrary, that third grade. Is there any?
Again, the foundational years, pre-K through 2, are those foundational years teaching children how to read, teaching children basic foundational skills. Once they get to third grade, they're, we're no longer teaching them to read. They're reading to learn. And so, that's a different level as far as where the child is in their educational journey.
But the reality is, is the vaccine isn't gonna be available for any of those children.
That is, that is correct. That is correct. It's available 12 through 12 and higher right now.
Dr. Hastings, I think is next, I'm sorry.
Let me just follow up a little bit. I mean, there will always be some exceptions. And we'll take that for, if an application comes in, we'll review it. But I think it's important for what we, what we know is that we need to get our students reading by the end of second grade. And what we do know about reading and math instruction is much more powerful and effective face-to-face. Not to say that there could be some students who do very well with that, and we'll have to address that, listening to the parents and then monitoring them. But this is the direction that I took away from when we met. And so, but we can alter it if we see numbers. So, please note that this is a flexible program and we're trying to address the needs of our community and also address what the Governor is asking us to do and try to bounce that and making sure that importantly is that our students succeed. So, we will be flexible.
With the understanding that that preliminary survey that we sent out was, was that, was just very preliminary. Are we sending, are we opening up the survey to everybody? Or are we just starting it with third-grade families?
The survey, I believe, was open up to everybody and it's still ongoing. And we're still collecting data and it changes every day. And so, we keep monitoring that and that's gonna kind of drive us, drive how many teachers we have. But right now, we're looking at, for example, what Ms. Thompson said is that we're looking for one third and one fourth. That could change and we might only need one. So, we're just here again, being flexible. This is new to everybody. But what we know and what research is coming out, what little research it is over this 16 months or so, is that, or 18 months, is that face-to-face is a much more powerful platform in teaching students. But we know that some students have been successful in the virtual world. So, as I said, we're gonna put kids first and we're gonna move in that direction.
Thank you.
So, did you have a question?
Dr. Hastings is next, unless you have a.
I did have one for that.
From Ms. Thompson.
I'm sorry. So, this is just for clarification. So, we said we're gonna have one teacher designated for the third grade and fourth grade. And we want to keep the ratio, I think I saw it 19 to 1. So, only 19 kids, students will be eligible for this. That's why we're gonna look at, have the application and review those applications to make sure, because those slots, I mean, I don't know what the demand would be. It could be pretty selective, is that correct?
From what I understand, based on the survey, that those were the number of classes that we thought we probably would need. But again, I think I heard Mr. Henderson say there may be some flexibility in that. And again, you know, we really want to make sure that we are selecting students that have a track record of success in virtual learning. And so, there may be some that it's really not the best fit for. And so, I think looking at both of those combined, we'll be able to make some good decisions about that.
Makes sense, thank you.
I would also add that as, because we are required to bring or to offer in-person instruction to all of our students and because we have, in many of our schools, 60, 70% of the families have already opted to send their children back, we anticipate that we'll have a large number of students that will be ready to return next year. And we need teachers in the classroom to teach all of those children.
Any other questions before we move to Dr. Hastings?
I guess, I was just wondering about what would be the reasons for an application to be declined for virtual learning?
I think we need to, as a division, come up with some criteria for that. We, the application, as you saw, is still sort of in progress and we haven't really discussed exactly what that's gonna look like, other than that schools will weigh in on that. And again, you know, we have to look across the entire division. If there are, you know, two applications from one school and 16 from another, you know what I mean, that we just need to look at, look at it holistically and decide, what do we really think is best for each individual child?
And also, at the end of the presentation, you'll see information that the VDOE sent to us, to school divisions, about what successful virtual instruction looks like. And so, part of that, you'll see, is gonna be attendance. And so, principals will look at how that child learned this year. Were they engaged? Did they attend? Did they complete their assignments on time, turn them in? And were they academically successful? So, we'll take into account all of those things as applications come in.
I mean, Dr. Odi, I'm, I, it's just interesting, because like, honestly, I don't, if there was no pandemic, I would expect all the kids to be back in school, especially in elementary school. So, providing the option for virtual seems to me to be based on concerns around health rather than academics. And I wonder if we have, if that, if I've just mistaken my, in my thinking there, because that's what I thought, and that's why I'm confused, I think. Because it seems like we're focusing more on the ability of the child to learn virtually rather than on like the factors related to the family's health and well-being.
Absolutely, absolutely. That could certainly play into why a family opts or requests and applies to remain virtual. And that is something that we would certainly consider. And there's a, one of the questions on the survey does ask why the family is asking for virtual instruction. And there's a place for them to reply in the other section there. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I just, again, like with elementary kids, the, I understand and recognize the importance of being in-person. And so, it would be kind of an extraordinary need, it sounds like, to kind of create these two classrooms and fill these two classrooms. The extraordinary need being the health as a main criteria. I mean, I think fifth through 12th grade are gonna be very different. I look forward to hearing what they have to say. But that's just, that's my perspective.
Yeah, I, here again, I think there will be some students that, third and fourth graders, that over their three or four years in elementary school were struggling academically or emotionally and socially. And then, they went to the virtual platform and have shown just tremendous progress, measured by what they've done in the past. And a parent is asking the division, can my child continue with virtual learning? Because it's, he's showing progress, he's emotionally, socially doing better than what is in the past. Then, I think we need to look at that and figure out that's the best situation for that child. Is it gonna be a large number? Probably not. But I think we just need to take into consideration, since we've moved from a virtual platform going into a face-to-face, and we've only been doing face-to-face for several months, I think we need to, at least for this coming year, to be a little bit flexible. But, and I think if it's a medical issue, then our system has in place homebound instruction. And that's already in place, that we do virtual and homebound. We also do face-to-face and homebound. So, we also have to take that into consideration too. But I think these are for children who have just shown significant progress. And why would we not give them a chance to continue in that same learning framework?
Thank you.
Dr. Hastings, you're up, I think.
Madam Chair, persons, members of the board, Superintendent Henderson, thank you very much. What a pleasure it is to talk to you this evening about virtual instruction at Walker. And I bring you only one slide. So, when we look at the elementary programs, it's about coordination across schools. At Walker, we are the division, but we have a fair amount of coordination that still needs to take place in our building. This year, on March 8th, we brought back just about 400 of our 659 Wolverines came back in person. What that meant was over 200 of our students stayed virtual. We did an awesome job this year in virtual instruction, I gotta tell you. And really, it's thanks to an awesome team. Mugsy Marini, one of our assistant principals, just absolutely did an amazing job leading our Walker-at-home program this year. But we have lessons to learn. As Ms. Thompson said, we had a large part of our day that was asynchronous. And so, moving into a setup next year. And so moving into a setup next year where our student will be online all day long is a change, but we have learned some amazing lessons this past year in virtual instruction. And so as you heard from the elementary, from the, from the pre-K five, excuse me, pre-K four approach, we would be an application-based enrollment system where students and families would select to come in person or select to be virtual. And then what we have a challenge, the challenge that sits in front of us is how do we arrange an entire school day? So you might think in our, in our current setup, we had electives two days a week, whereas in a normal setup, we have electives five days a week. We have PE five days a week. So trying to figure out those kinds of experiences and make sure that we have an equitable allocation of time and resources for students, both in the virtual environment and in-person environment, is critical in our decision-making. So we look forward to a virtual program in which our students have access to all-day virtual instruction with extremely limited asynchronous instruction, just as Ms. Thompson said. We think about a student reading a text or a student working an independent work, but not a student taking 90 minutes to log back into a class later. One challenge that we may have, depending on enrollment, is electives. We staff elective classes at about 20 students in a class. You can imagine, let's say 24 students sign up for virtual instruction at Walker next year. If two of them want to do orchestra and 22 of them want to do chorus, it will be awfully hard to offer a two-person orchestra section. However, our elective team has been absolutely fantastic in their flexibility this year and looking at creative ways to provide instruction for students. In fact, Mr. Bryant, I know you'll be happy to know, we just, we just did seven concerts, including virtual and in-person students over the last two weeks. And they were, I'm telling you, I was bawling in the back of the auditorium. It was fantastic. It was, it was, it was really amazing. What we've focused on this year and what we intend to focus on next year is ensuring that our students in virtual instruction are a part of our school community. This is a difficult decision for families to make and we want to make sure that families are still Walker Wolverines as they're in our instructional program. And as I said, we weren't perfect this year, but we made tremendous strides in virtual instruction. And I'm, I'm just excited beyond belief about how we're going to navigate these two programs. Not the least of which to mention that when students stay home for virtual instruction, it eases our capacity issues for in-person instruction. So there are some unintended positive consequences to this kind of decision-making.
Any questions, board members?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Board, Chairmembers. Beaufort Virtual Learning Option, we will include all subject areas of the program, Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, and History, Health and PE, and Electives. Next slide. And we will include all of these virtual learners in our normal schedule. We will build sections for these courses with the learners in the courses and they will be spread out amongst the teachers that teach that certain subject area. They will be able to enjoy Strive, our intervention block as well, and they will be in virtual sections and not hybrid. So these sections would be all virtual learners versus in-person. And that is the model for Beaufort.
I'm just here for backup, really. But if you could go back to the Beaufort slide, thank you. It's the same application process, Monday through Friday, normal schedule, which is nine, 8:15, 8:30 to 3:15. So essentially, it's the same look as what Adam mentioned. We would not offer, we would not offer Algebra I or Geometry or some of our rural languages as, as the virtual option, but that would be parsed out through the application. So that's really it. Any questions?
Dr. Kraft?
Maybe I, I may have missed this because the sound is kind of wonky here.
Right, a lot of information.
But how, how is the virtual, how are, how is this being staffed within Beaufort? Is it?
Right.
Yeah, by subject, teachers by subject will do both in-person and virtual?
Right.
On a certain schedule? Is that it?
Right, Dr. Kraft, let me, go ahead.
So teachers currently teach five out of seven classes and the schedule would be, depending upon the enrollment of how many students would elect to be virtual, we would create virtual sections in a teacher's schedule. So they may have four in-person and one virtual and they would then accommodate those students during that virtual section. There would not be, it would not be a case where we would have some students on, online and some sitting in the classroom. So it would be a separate section. And depending upon the electives and what they, what students want to choose and if it's able to be done virtually, then it would be limited to those electives.
So many of the teachers may be teaching virtually?
Yes.
As well as in-person?
So we would have at least one teacher per subject area that would assume a virtual section of instruction for those students.
Thank you.
So I just have one quick follow-up to that. So you really, in order to get your schedule and things together, you really won't know, because I assume that teacher will still be limited to whatever that classroom teacher-student ratio would be? So you may not know if that student is eligible until you get everything in and then able to see like how many students, you know, wanted virtual and if they could fit in this classroom. You're going to have to make some decisions, I assume.
Yes, and it is really based on enrollment. We can say that we can offer at least one section per subject area in virtual within our master schedule for staff, with the exception of electives. We have some electives that are singletons.
Yeah.
So it would be difficult. So that's, you know, why we would have to really look at what students want in terms of electives and if we would be able to honor that or put them in an elective with multiple sections, such as art, journalism.
So this is just, this is for, it could be for all of the, the classes. I think it, you know, parents may be questioning like, is my son or daughter, are they eligible? And so just to be clear, it's not someone that can say, well, they're a late riser and they don't like to get up early, so, you know, that type of thing. It's, you're going to look at their past performances, if, over the past year, if they didn't do well in participating and turning in assignments, then you're going to say that they may not be a good candidate. We want them in-house. We want to be able to, to talk to them.
Yes, sir. So the same contingencies that were mentioned earlier in terms of engagement and historical of success would hold true.
Thank you.
I had a question in regards to if a student is in either band, orchestra, or chorus, how will, if they choose to go virtual, are they going to be able to participate in the class and classes playing, they're at home playing solo? I'm just trying to visualize how that would look.
So currently, our band, orchestra, choir electives are being instructed in small groups, two to three, max of four, in a, kind of like a private lesson type of format. So if there is a student in band or orchestra or choir that is electing to be virtual and has been approved to be in the virtual program, then we would have to work with those teachers on a case-by-case basis to, you know, bring them into the instruction. With that being said, any student that is in our virtual program will also enjoy the extracurricular activities and then be included into the school community, just as all Beaufort students are. So participation in concerts, participation in sports after school will still be open and available for those virtual learners.
One point I'd like to make, if you remember a couple of years ago, we had quite a bit of discussion on electives at Beaufort, where many of our students were only getting one elective. And we chose that at a middle school experience, our kids need and develop their skills through, through electives. And so we, we made sure that every student at Beaufort was getting two electives. And so parents need to think clearly that their child's going into a middle school experience and part of a middle, middle school experience is to be engaged in activities outside of the content area. And so when they go to virtual, they are giving up something. And we're going to try to do what we possibly can to meet their needs, but, you know, band and, and chorus, choir and, and orchestra are, are not the same virtually as they are in, in person. And so I think that's just something our parents have to think through and make sure that, that with their guidance and, and our discussion with them, that they're making the rest, the best choice.
And that, that should be a consideration with the application as well.
Yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Prairie, welcome. Nice to see you. I did have a couple of questions and then just a reminder to everybody in the, who's speaking, whether you're at the podium or up here at, at the table, please work a little harder to speak into your mic. We, we might be hearing each other okay here, but we've got Facebook folks trying to listen in and Pat's working really hard back there to kind of adjust the volume. So just a reminder, please. And I, if I miss this, I'm sorry, but as far as, I think, I believe I heard you all say that you're going to, when you're assigning teachers to the role of virtual instruction, you're trying to spread it out. So teachers might have four, four sections face to face and then potentially one virtual. So you're spreading it out. Do you all have, is that a different, I'm not a teacher, so is that a different prep time? I mean, is that, what does that look like for the teachers? And, and do we have some lesson planning or some materials that you guys have learned and, and kind of banked from, from this year or this past year that, that they can lean into and use?
Well, that's a great question. Certainly, they are going to continue with the lesson plan or the pacing that they would in, for their in-person students. What that looks like virtually may take a little of adjustment, just for strategies that we know work virtually as opposed to in-person. But the curriculum would be the same if, and the pacing would need to be the same as well. Students will be on from 8:30 to 3:15, primarily synchronous learning. So that's real time, cameras on, teacher-student engagement virtually. What it looks like as far as strategies, it might differ a bit, but the pacing and the curriculum would be the same.
And it would not, I'm sorry, Madam Chairwoman, person, sorry, I don't mean, you know Lisa, it does not impact their planning. So they'll still have common planning together because there's still, the, the section that they'll teach virtually will be a part of the five sections if it were set up here today. And forgive me for saying Madam Chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? And, and just, I want to repeat because I believe I have heard from elementary all the way up through Beaufort, I want to make sure everybody hears this, that their expectation is that students are logged in for the entire, the entire day. So parents need to understand that, students need to understand that, and that is from the VDOE.
That's correct.
That is a requirement. So I want to make sure that everybody does hear that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And cameras on.
The, the expectation would be that cameras are on. And so we'll have the tenants established and that will be a part of the application.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, Madam Chair. And it, it could be for Dr. Odie or anyone who spoke previously. Will the virtual teaching also serve as a, like if a student needs to quarantine, I know this year, they would quarantine in the virtual classrooms that were offered. Is that the plan for this year as well? If in-person students needed to quarantine?
Yes, ma'am, if it's okay, we'd like to defer to Dr. Odie.
We have had some discussion about what that would look like if a child does need to quarantine. We certainly don't want to, the, the virtual program, let's, let's talk about elementary. The virtual program will be the teacher has 19 students that are assigned to her or him virtually. So we don't necessarily want to place the child in that classroom for those two weeks or whatever it will be for quarantine, but we want to be able to somehow make sure that the child does not miss out on instruction. We've, we've bounced around a few ideas. Will they go in that class? Will we zoom them into the class with a teacher? We haven't landed on where that will be, but what we do know is that we've learned a lot this year on how to support students who have to have extended absences. And so we want to make sure that we have a plan in place so that those children that need to quarantine can continue with their learning.
Can, can you speak a little bit more to why you wouldn't, like at the elementary level, why a student wouldn't be added to that class, that virtual class?
Well, what I, Ms. Thompson, would you like to talk about that? But what, what we talked about is the interruption as far as the teachers got the 19 children and then we hope that pacing will be the same, the teachers are planning together and the lessons are flowing and as, as they do in, in the in-person class and the virtual class. But to put a child in and then take them back out in 10 to 14 days could, could seem disruptive. So we want to be able to talk more about that with our teachers, with our principals, and see what the impact would be there.
Yeah. Thank you for the chance to talk about this because we did go sort of around and around about what would we do in this situation. And similarly to how we wouldn't necessarily, you know, even within a building, you wouldn't necessarily move a child from one class to another because the pacing could be off, it would just be different, it would be disruptive. There would be real, no real reason to do that, but it almost is the same situation if we were to take a person who was in-person and then put them in the virtual class for a short period of time. They wouldn't necessarily be on exactly the same pacing. It would actually be a lot more effective for the student as they're in quarantine to be working with their own teacher and that could take a variety of different forms, but so that they are still connected with their class, they're connected with their teacher, their teacher knows what their strengths and weaknesses are, and they're working together to make sure that the child's getting what they need during that time. So I used in our meeting previously with Dr. Odie, the example of, you know, if a child just became very ill, you know, not COVID time or broke their leg or something like that, what we would typically see is that the teacher would be sending homework that the child would be working on at home, either with their family or now that we do have this great interface of Canvas, a teacher could record a really short lesson to teach a child, hey, this is how we're going to do this math concept, now work on this at home. Again, does just sort of maintain that continuity between the child and the existing class and the existing teacher.
I think what you need, what we need to think about is that if a child gets sick and has chickenpox and he's out for seven days in the classroom, well, he steps away and that classroom teacher does some things to hopefully maintain his or her progress in the classroom. We would be doing the same thing. We're, we've got a tool now called virtual learning that, that our teachers are better prepared now than they were four or five years ago. And so that will be part of, of their pharmacy of tools to use. But we would not be moving students in and out of, of a virtual program because we've already set that up, we've identified kids who are moving forward. But they would be given whatever they need and assistance if they're out due to illness or due to quarantine, whatever, because it's a short period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. I.
Greetings, Board Chair. Mr. Henderson, how are you? We are going to talk a little bit about Charlottesville, Charlottesville High School, LMA, all of our secondary programming. The high school experience is, is complicated and I think our teachers have done an incredible job at providing just a multitude of different instructional strategies to meet the need while we were in virtual and also in hybrid, which proved to be equally as difficult with students in the classroom and, and virtual. So next year, what we're offering is we're going to look at the So next year, what we're offering is we're going to look at the best practices that we've had at the high school. We have always had virtual classes, and I think they're listed up there, econ, personal finance, health and PE, creative writing, and second eye test. And astronomy as well. We've always had those courses built into our schedule. And we've always partnered and supplemented what we have offered with Virtual Virginia schools as well. So what we're going to do moving forward due to the complexity of the high school. You need 22 credits to graduate, you need five verified credits. A 10th grader doesn't take 10th grade math. They could be anywhere from Algebra I to trig. So we really just need to figure out how to support our students. So our plan will be to continue to offer our virtual courses through Canvas. And remember, our teachers, even though, you know, before the pandemic, they were using Canvas very well, they've gone leaps and bounds in having modules ready to go, videos to really supplement what they're doing inside the classrooms. And that's not going to change. I think they're going to continue to do that and continue to build on those skills. And for our Virtual Virginia courses, those are courses that we've traditionally used Virtual Virginia to supplement. So let's say you were looking forward to taking a sequential, you know, let's say, I'm just going to make something up, Latin III. And let's just say, for some reason, it didn't fit into your schedule. Or we didn't have enough students to make, to have the class make what we call the high school. We've always used Virtual Virginia to supplement that. Or if you've maxed out some of your mouths and there is a math above and beyond what we offer, we've used Virtual Virginia in those cases as well. So moving forward, we're going to use Virtual Virginia and our existing virtual courses to help supplement our students for next year. I only had one slide.
I'm just reading through other points here on your slide. Any questions from anybody else? Dr. Kraft?
I was just wondering, I don't know much about the Virtual Virginia classes. And I'm just wondering what your experience has been with those? And have they been good? Have the students received them well? Have they been successful?
We've had, to be honest, we've had mixed results with Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia, just so I can, you know, explain it to everyone, there is a virtual teacher that's not a Charlottesville high school teacher. So they are licensed in the state of Virginia, it's a Virginia program. But we don't have a lot of control, you know, we don't, we don't know who the, you know, we know who the teacher is, but they're not a part of our staff. So we've had some disconnects in Virtual Virginia. We've also had some success, students that are self-paced and that have a good aptitude for learning online and virtually, do have some success there. But it does take a lot of executive functioning to be successful in those classes. You've got to learn to time manage, you've got to learn how to, you know, email your teacher. You can't find them in the building, you know, you're going to have to email. And I know Mr. Bryan has some experience with that while he was a counselor. So it is a, we've had mixed results from it. I'm hopeful that with the pandemic and the effort that the state has put into Virtual Virginia, that we'll be able to, that they've maybe strengthened some of those supports as well. But for a Virtual Virginia student that is taking classes at CHS, we do provide, obviously it would be in the school day for most of our students. That's how we've traditionally done it. They'd have a learning lab where they'd have access to one of our staff members to help with some of the technical difficulties. But again, we've had mixed results, but I'm optimistic that some of those obstacles have been bridged by the state and by Virtual Virginia moving forward.
I believe at the retreat, we talked a lot about flexibility for our high school students, especially our 11th and 12th graders. Not that you were there, but I just wanted to, one of the things that I feel is so missing, especially from the, is basically individual plans for our students. I mean, because I recognize the kind of labor-intensive nature of, it sounds like we're asking a lot from our principals and our staff, but like being in partnership with our parents and our families in a meaningful way. And I don't see in this model, especially at the high school level, you know, any flexibility unless you're in the Virtual Virginia. And what I would ask, not, and maybe this is the wrong time, but I do feel very strongly that we need to consider flexibility, especially 11th and 12th graders, how they can have school work for them instead of working for school. And I really would love our division to be thinking much more broadly about how we can meet the needs of our high school students who, I don't know, want to work in the morning or want to go to K-Tech in the morning, but also be in orchestra. I mean, there's just a lot of things that our high school students want to explore. And some of the scheduling that we have in our buildings makes it very difficult for them. And I don't see this virtual experience as solving that problem at all. And I know that you recognize that, and I appreciate that. And I just was, I'm just hoping that as a division, that as we move forward with this new information that we've gained over the past 16 months, that we work to really supporting families and students for making school work for them. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was going to reiterate that personal and economic finance is a terrible class to do virtually. It is so painful. And I have not talked to a parent yet who hasn't done a module for their student. And I just find the whole thing ridiculous. And I encourage parents to ask that their students take that class in-person because it has very important information. But with all of the work that you're asked to do virtually, it's just meaningless. And I hate that for our students who could really benefit from a very, who should be benefiting from this class. So that's what I'm concerned with, that all of these virtual classes will be. And I don't, it's just like busy work and not critically, it's not allowing students to critically learn the things that they will need once they graduate. So that's my, also, if you have a chance to do in-person, please do in-person.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Johnson, our student rep, has some questions. He's on Zoom.
Yeah, so can I be heard? I just want to make sure because I'm on my phone. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was making sure, I ain't know. All right, so first off, I wanted to ask, because I was a little confused. So with CHS in particular, will there be, like how there is now a virtual learning? Or like, is it going to have to be, like, I'm kind of confused. Like, is there like a selection base? Or is it just you have to go in-person unless you're in that program?
I couldn't hear that 100%, sorry.
I think, Mr. Johnson, was your question whether there was an application to be part of the virtual?
Yeah, so is there going to be like a virtual option, like there is a walker in elementary schools? Or is it just going to be straight in-person for CHS students?
Yeah, Jasan, the answer to your first question, there is no application for these classes. We will look to make sure that the student is successful in, especially the Virtual Virginia courses, the ones that are not taught specifically by our teachers. But there is not a 100% virtual option like the K-model for the high school. It would be a combination of face-to-face and virtual classes.
Okay. That's all I had. I was just confused on whether that was an option or not.
I just feel like it needs to be clarified that, based on Mr. Johnson's question, that what, Virtual Virginia is a separate entity, it's a statewide entity with qualified teachers that are not CHS teachers who provide these classes virtually, which we have offered as a division for as long as I can remember, it's been around. And I think, but there's no application process for that.
Not an application, but we will have to, there has to be a vacancy to get it. So you have to apply, but there are no...
Criteria.
There's no criteria necessarily.
You have to kind of let people know that you're interested.
Correct. Yep. Working with your counselor, you would indicate which classes. You'd work with your counselor to figure out which classes would be appropriate with your individual schedule. Not so much with our classes, the same thing, you reach out to your counselor. I'd like to take, you know, virtual health and PE, whatever your choice is. You'd work with your counselor on that. But many of these courses are meant to supplement or augment a face-to-face schedule, not necessarily replace.
Got it.
And that's still available, correct? I mean, so students could be, I mean, in-person and taking just because of conflicts within their schedule. They could take some of the Virtual Virginia or Canvas courses online. And/or, if we have high school students who want to or choosing to go strictly virtual, this is what they will be choosing from a combination of Virtual Virginia and the few classes that we have offered.
And face-to-face. Because there's, it would be very difficult in most cases to piece together a full schedule that would allow you to graduate on time and meet your Virginia requirements. And the other barrier we have with Virtual Virginia is there are still spaces, limited spaces with the Virtual Virginia as well. So there would have to be a space within that class in order for that student to enroll into that class.
And there is a date, right? Isn't it by July 1st we need to know?
July 15th, I believe, is the date.
And also, those classes fill up quickly.
They do fill up very quickly.
Virtual Virginia classes. So that could be an issue.
So, okay, so let me, I'm sorry, just for clarity, for my clarity. So you're saying for just this next year, if a student wanted to do completely virtual, you don't feel like that would be an option for them to continue to stay on track to graduate?
With this model, it would not necessarily enable a student to be 100% virtual and meet their graduation requirements for that year or to, or for their high school trajectory.
Any other questions?
Yes, could I add something, please?
Yes, sir.
I know I said I was finished, but I just wanted to add something. I was listening to, you know, what was said about pre-K through 2 and out CHS. And can I just say, when it comes to this virtual option, I know that, you know, we're going into this new school year and, you know, we're having this optimistic view of, you know, the pandemic's winding down, people are getting vaccines and stuff like that. Well, I just really want to make a focus here that that doesn't take away from the fact that we still have families who are in predicaments or situations that require them to be virtual. You know, me personally, you know, I, you know, with a younger brother, I have a situation now where I have to watch my younger brother while I'm in school. If my younger brother doesn't have that virtual option, or he does have that virtual option, but, you know, I don't, then who's going to watch him? You see what I'm saying? Or if, you know, if I have to do something around the house, but there's no one here to do it, how can that get done? I think there needs to be, you know, more, you know, there needs more attention on those situations instead of the statistics that are going around. Like, yes, vaccines are getting in arms, yes, the pandemic's winding down and cases are getting lower. But that doesn't take away from the fact that families are not comfortable going out. Families are not, you can see here at the school board meeting, there's people in-person and there's people on virtual. That is the perfect example of how some people are in different situations or in different mindsets when it comes to this pandemic. And there's not enough options right now that I'm seeing that, you know, that benefit both sides. And can I just say, you know, when it comes to vaccine statistics, you know, yeah, they look good. But when you look at the equity issue with that, you know, people of color and white, we have different, the numbers of, what am I looking for? They're very different, very different. And there's an equity issue here where we have people who are not, and I don't know what the rules would be with, you know, vaccines and who can, you know, do you need to be vaccinated to come to the school or not? But there is a big difference in the amount of people who are vaccinated when it comes to categories, so, you know, we want to go with that. So I just think we have to look at other things besides to decide on whether there will be virtual options in some schools, virtual options or not. And then, you know, like at CHS where there's a different program without students like this, it's just not a clear plan to benefit both sides. And I think that needs to be discussed and fixed. I don't know how we can, but, or if it is fixable. But there's too many families and predicaments that don't allow them to be in-person for there to be a pre-K through 2 that are not, you know, there's not a virtual option in it for CHS to have a virtual option, especially for CHS to be such a big school and have so many students. I just feel like that's not okay. I had to say that, I'm sorry.
Please don't apologize. Those are all great points, and thank you. Again, I would hope that, again, as the survey is out there or we continue to push this survey out, that we are trying to really reach out to all families, all grade levels, to make sure that we are hearing these points, hearing these concerns. I don't have a doubt that if the numbers came back for CHS, that Dr. Irozari wouldn't sit down with his team and sit down with Mr. Henderson and see how we can meet the needs and the requests of our students. I mean, I believe that's what Charlottesville City Schools is about. And I think, you know, how Dr. I and his team pivoted this spring based on decisions that we, the board, made, you know, are a prime example of how you were able to do that for some students, and we are grateful for that. So I trust and hope that we will continue to do that. And thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your comments. Dr. Kraft?
Just mentioned that, you know, I appreciate those comments, Mr. Johnson. And I was thinking about the community partners that we had this year. And it may be that we could enlist some help from some of those community partners for particular situations in the coming year, you know, if that's needed. So that would be maybe another resource that we could look at as we're trying to meet every student's need and every family's need under these conditions.
I think you're absolutely...
It's critical that we understand what every parent's needs. Surveys are not going to get us the information that we want. We need to do outreach to the families, I think, and more specifically. I think that this division has a great track record of meeting families' needs if we know about them. And so it really is incumbent on families. If you're having an issue with child killer, for example, like Mr. Johnson suggested, that you reach out to the guidance counselor at your, or your school counselor, or your principal, or your teacher to note those things so that they can support your family. We're going to do the best we can with these surveys and try to do this kind of more systemically. But I think we, you know, to really, on an individual level, I want to do that, I, you know, individual plans. But for now, families need to reach out and ask for the help and support. And I know that this division will step up and support you in that case.
Any other questions or comments? LaChandra, I don't have you on my screen, so I will turn around. But I trust that one of you all will let me know if she's listening.
I'm good, I would say something. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you to the administrators for your presentations tonight, your commitment. And Leslie, if you could put the presentation back up for the additional considerations slide.
Dr. Odie, do you mind taking your mask off while you're at the mic and just making sure that you're speaking into it, please?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I meant to take it off.
Thank you, principals.
Okay, as the additional consideration slide comes back up, I want to just talk about some of the things that we have here. As I mentioned earlier, the Virginia Department of Education did share with us a draft guidance for successful virtual instruction. And so here are some of the things that we want to consider for those families that do apply to have their child participate in virtual instruction. There, we will need to set clear expectations for staff, students, parents, caretakers before that virtual learning begins. For instance, we want to ensure that the student has access to technology, internet, is ready to have good attendance. Student needs to be engaged, as we mentioned before, assignment submission, completion deadlines, and be ready to consistently communicate with their teacher. There would be appropriate, it specifically says appropriate synchronous and asynchronous instruction, counseling support for in-person and virtual students. And if a student is having academic difficulties, we would look at... we would look at creating an action plan for that student or creating a contract to get the student back on target. But if needed, we would move that student back into in-person instruction. And also, if a student does recommend to go from virtual to in-person, school divisions are required to allow that right away. So we would be prepared to do that. Consistent monitoring of the effectiveness of virtual and learning. For instance, assessment checks, formative assessment checks each quarter or bi-weekly, however often we feel that it needs to occur, specifically if a student having academic challenges. And of course, planning to possibly transition a student back to in-person learning if needed. Next slide, please. So here you will see some additional information about, from the draft guidance from the Virginia Department of Education. And on these next several slides, you'll see these items. There's a focus on student engagement, whether or not the student has an environment that is conducive to learning with necessary tools that they need. Again, the child must have access to internet and devices. And fortunately, we have, we've done a great job here in Charlottesville City Schools with providing that access and the devices that students need in order to learn. There must be regular attendance, that is an expectation, I can't stress that enough. Next slide, please. An engagement is mentioned again with student responsiveness and work completion, communication with teachers, receiving and providing feedback, submission of work in a timely manner, demonstrating mastery of learning and participating in services and supports provided by the school. Organization is mentioned, time management, self-advocacy, digital citizenship, and academic integrity. And of course, if a student, if a school deems a student is not being successful in CCS virtual, an action plan, like I said before, would be written and return the child to in-person instruction. Next slide, please. And here, just a little bit more information of some of the things that I've already mentioned there. So as far as next steps for us, we really want to be able to get that application on the website so that we can get an accurate number of what families are interested in virtual learning. So we want to, our next step is to finalize that application so that we can get that out there if the board does approve. We'll continue with planning for the fall of 2021. We will, of course, remain up to date with legislation and governors, and the governor's mandates. We'll monitor the CDC and VDOE guidelines. And what we are always and constantly doing is reflecting on what really went well this year. And we're learning from that. And what areas didn't go quite well, and we're learning from that as well. We know that some students absolutely excelled at virtual instruction and some did not. So we want to be able to meet the needs of all of our students. And of course, we want to prepare for a safe return to learning for students and staff. Next slide, please. So that concludes our presentation. And at this time, if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question, Dr. Odie.
Yes.
In your draft guidance for successful virtual instruction, one of the bullet points was consistent monitoring of effectiveness of virtual learning. Other than the virtual teacher, who would be responsible for following up, you said, the end of the first quarter in addition to that teaching? But are the school counselors going to be involved in monitoring students? Especially if we have students, of course, taking virtual classes at the high school and the elementary and middle schools? Would you have the principals involved? So is it going to be a collaboration between the three of those people?
Absolutely.
Students are being successful?
Absolutely. And as I mentioned earlier, we are planning to involve a liaison as well that would sort of monitor the program, organize it, and work closely with the principal, the teachers, the families to ensure that students are successful. And we know that it's not only academic success that we're looking at, we're looking at mental wellness, social emotional wellness. We're looking all of those pieces to ensure that if a child does choose to be a virtual student and is allowed to through the application process, that they are successful. We are, it is, it is what we do, make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students.
So we're also going to be doing sort of check-ins when we see things maybe going early on slightly awry. But there will be an intervention at that point in time.
Absolutely, which is why I said.
End of the nine weeks.
Which is why I don't think we should wait till the end of the nine weeks. Because you don't want to let a child get that far gone, being unsuccessful. So frequent check-ins to ensure. And if a teacher or counselor or someone sees that a child is starting to suffer or have challenges, then we need to jump right there to provide support and see what needs to happen next.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment that that return to plan program that was submitted, that was presented tonight, if we can make sure that it's on the website. I haven't been on it in a couple of days, it may already have been on there. Just kind of prominently presented so that people will know, even though it's still in flux because the survey is still out. I think it will help a lot of parents.
Right. And I think at this point, the survey is still there. But at this point, the, the application is where we would start getting that actual intent as we're moving closer to the year so that we can start planning for who, who's going to be those teachers.
I know, Mr. Wade, you had some questions from a family and I think you were probably referencing this, so I don't know. I think it would be important that the community understands that really we are, at this point, only looking, or we're starting at third grade. So I don't know what age those students are at, but currently, that is what our plan is.
Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will be discussing plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of service. Sorry, they sounded a little similar.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. This evening, I'm going to be sharing with you what, in a much shorter term than what Ms. Torres just read, it's the health plan component of coming back in the fall. And, sorry, am I close enough now? And so the health plan is something that's not new. We've had a health plan since last July. That was the first publication of a health plan. But what is new is that with the American Recovery, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, there is a much more prescriptive template was released for the health plan. And in order to receive our ARPA funds that have been allocated this month, we needed to get our plan up and available to the public for comment and input. So tonight's presentation and what I'm about to show you is part of that process of making sure that the public is aware of what our plans are for a safe return to learning in the fall and for continuity of instruction in the fall. And so Leslie, if you don't mind, on our homepage right now, the Return to Learn link is always in that far-left menu there beside the main photo. So Leslie's going to click on Return to Learn. You can also always enter charlottesvilleschools.org/returntolearn. And also you will get to this page by doing that. And then right at the top of the page, what we decided to do is to not confuse people. All of the information for the current school year, which ends tomorrow effectively, is still there. But at the very top now, we've started to build out the content that will inform our families for next year. And so Leslie's going to click on the English version of the plan. Because one of the other things, and this is something we do all the time anyway, but the federal guidance and regulations around ARPA want you to be, want it to be very clear that the plan is available in multiple languages and translation options are available. And so all of that was what you saw on the screen that lead you to this. I am not going to read all the pages of this plan to you. But I will talk about, you know, give you an overview of what is in the plan. And you would also notice on the page Leslie was just on there. In addition to, and I confess, I should have brought a printed copy of it with me because this is challenging my distance vision to see it up there on the screen. But on that, on that same page where you can look at where the document has already been translated into our top languages, there was also an option where you could text for support with multiple languages. And then also, also contact that same number for, to provide suggestions and, or comments on the plan. So there's an introduction that explains our guiding principles, lists who the key contacts are. I have great partners in working through these health plans. But I do have primary ownership for these plans, but all of our names and emails, phone numbers are there. The next section is, oh, this is going to be hard, mitigation. This is the meat of the plan. And it talks about all the different mitigation measures that we are taking in our layered mitigation approach to support a safe return to learning. Each of those bullets are part of the prescribed template. And so we show, we talk specifically about how we're addressing each of those areas. And then after you get past those bullets, it, we have some extra things in there that Charlottesville, where Charlottesville City has gone above and beyond. You can stop there, Leslie, there's like three different areas. And I guess what I want to say, and I've been talking with my colleagues, Beth Baptist in particular, as we look towards next year, truly the only constant has been change when it comes to the health plan as we've navigated the past year. And this summer will be no exception. And so two areas that we're looking at pretty keenly are what are going to be the requirements or the direction from the state for wearing masks for the vaccinated population, the older students? We don't know that yet. A lot of, you know, right now, I think all of us are planning to come back with our masks, which, you know, we were wearing sitting in the audience. But, oh, thank you, that's kind, yeah. Memory's a dangerous thing. But anyway, we're going to have to wait and see. Because if the state makes a strong movement that the vaccine-eligible population, 12 and up, if the data indicates that they don't need to wear masks, you know, that's just something we're going to have to stay in tune with. So there, there could be a distinction in the age levels and the decision that's made with masks there, we'll see. I believe there was some breaking news this evening, by the way, for those of you, about the state of emergency being lifted sometime soon for the state. So that, that has come out since we've been in this meeting. The other thing is on social distancing. And what, we've already been told, you know, that the six feet kind of is more like the three feet, although we want to maintain six feet wherever we can. And we always want to be doing the very best we can with all of our mitigation measures. And one of the, this is a challenge, one of the things that have, that we've, we're coming away from this pandemic with, there's a, there's a couple of silver linings. One is all the health and safety improvements we've made to our buildings, none of that's going away. Another one we talked about many times is the efficiencies we've picked up with Zoom meetings. Because now you can truly schedule so many back-to-back-to-back meetings without even leaving your office. You don't have the travel time. So we try to find the silver linings in the clouds. But those health and safety improvements are really great. And we are always going to, you know, maintain those now that we have those in place. But it's going to be interesting to see what happens with masks and physical distancing. We'll just have to see because the situation does continue to change and evolve rapidly. Okay, so again, I'm not going to read all of this to you. Then there is section three, the continuity of services, which was largely about what Dr. Odie and her team just spoke about, our principal team. But also, in addition to that, there's that technology component, which I have, we have to give huge kudos to Pat Cuomo and his team for everything that was done with, you know, we greatly expanded our inventory of Chromebooks and also the work that was done on internet access over the past year. So those are all things that are spoken to in section three. Section four, opportunity for public comment, that, we're officially launching that today. I would also point out that the Department of Education is also doing the same thing right now at the state level for public comment on the, on their plans around health and safety. That was in a superintendent's memo recently. And then section five, periodic review and revision of the plan. We have no trouble meeting that requirement. And one of the things I did hang on to from the previous plans, even though it wasn't specified in the template, the very end of this document is our, it's our health plan revisions. And you can see where we've kind of tried to keep track of those, at least in a summary form. And so we'll continue to do that. And last but not least, making the plan available to the public. And again, when the guidance was released for ARPA, they had some more prescriptive language about how, where they had less prescriptive language about the mitigation section, there was more prescriptive language about public comment and how you need to make it available to the public. And you'll see with what I've shown you on the website, we are meeting those requirements and will continue to do so. And that is a summary of the plan. I'm happy to take any questions, concerns, or comments from you all at this time. And then there, of course, is an opportunity for public comment at the end of this particular meeting agenda.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Lashandra.
Okay, I'm, I'm just a little confused. If you could clarify, you said there might be additional guidance on masks for children who are 12 and over because they, the vaccine was available to them. We can't ask if someone's been vaccinated. So can we still require masks? Or that, that, I just, I'm confused on if the guidance changes at the state level, if we can continue with our own protocol.
So the school board will ultimately decide on these, you know, any significant changes in our protocols. That's something we would bring to the board. I will say that there's been discussion, and we talk with, Beth Baptist and I participate weekly in a call with the whole region, with health department officials and local medical professionals in the pediatric community. And, you know, one of the topics that's also being heavily discussed is, you know, how there's certain vaccines that people have to have and you have to have proof that you were vaccinated. That hasn't happened yet with the COVID vaccine for public school. I can tell you it has happened with certain universities because I have to do that for one of my kids. My, my, one of my students, my son has to prove he's been vaccinated before he can enter, go to his college in the fall. So we're, you know, if the state were to, and Beth Baptist would be so much better at this, but I know there are vaccines that people have to prove they've had before they come to public school. If this, you know, if that changes for COVID, which it isn't the case right now, but just those are things we have to keep an eye on. And so there are things that are being actively discussed that we are actively watching and would come back to you with, with updates in any of those areas.
So I think similar to what Lashandra just asked, I mean, the locality, we would have, ultimately, we could decide on what we wanted and what our comfort level was and what our guidance was.
Unless something was legislated at the state level, that, you know, unless something was legislated that was, you know, statewide, then yes, it would be a board-level decision to change the health, to change from the health plan that you see here.
I know we have a lot of other things to talk about, but I know I have some strong opinions about masks and just how quickly the guidance on that changed. But I also was hoping, and Mr. Henderson's back at the table, and Dr. Baptist, I believe, is over there somewhere. So I was hoping that maybe in August, if it's appropriate, because I do know that there, there are a lot of questions around the vaccines. I know there's a lot of talk about the variants and about the Delta variant. And I don't know where we're at with that as far as Charlottesville goes. But an update from Dr. Bonds or somebody maybe come August. I don't know if we can.
I see Beth writing that down, so she, she is a follow-up item, yes.
And that may change, and we may not need it. But I think it probably would be helpful, whether it's from Dr. Bonds or from the wonderful team we have here, just to kind of update everybody as we prepare to return to school. Any other questions from anybody about this? And then this comes back next week, is that correct? Or at the next meeting?
Actually, it, next week would be another opportunity for public comment because there's a lot of funding associated with ARPA. And so when we, as we go through the process and we're submitting all of our information, the award, if you will, we know what our award is, but for the compliance piece of it, it cannot hurt to over-communicate and provide plenty of opportunity for public comment. So that's why we have the information on the website with the number that people can, can call or text. And I think having it as another opportunity for public comment, similar to what we do with budget and publishing that on the agenda, wouldn't be a bad thing in telling people to look at it on the website. Anything we can do to let people know this health plan is out there and available for review and comment.
Were there any changes? It seemed to either read or hear at, at the city council level, there were some more prescriptive guidance on how these funds could be used.
There are categories.
Pardon me?
There are categories, but they're the same categories we discussed at the retreat. And the things that the board did for the FY22 budget, the additions and so forth, were all in alignment with the category. were all in alignment with the categories. It's social emotional learning, learning, loss, recovery, health and safety, technology, health and sanitation, safety type items. And you can go through that budget changes document and every line that was put in is connected with the allowable uses for ARPA.
Okay, I just thought I had heard that there were some more recent changes in the last week.
Just a clarification, is this coming back to us for approval? Is this something we need to approve?
It's not, it's not something that has to be approved by the board, but we have to invite public comment. It has to be a very public, publicly available document. And honestly, as a matter of procedure, if you recall, when we went through the large process with preparing for return to learn, you know, what was it, February, March and everything that led up to that? You all never specifically voted on the health plan nor back in January, but it's always just a document that's a living document that we're always working on, always taking input and, and comment on. And certainly if anything significant changed and it wasn't just a no brainer, if you will, because it would come to you for discussion, it would need to come forward for discussion. Unless, if there were choices to be made.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we are going to just zip right through policies. So we are now discussing 2021 policy updates. Mr. Henderson and Dr. Baptist, correct?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Mr. Henderson. To finish up one thing that Ms. Powell just said, with the meetings that we are having with the Health Department and pediatricians every week, question was asked by one school division this week on Tuesday, how do we plan for the fall? And the answer was, keep doing what you're doing, keep all the medication in plant, in place that you've got now, and hopefully we can back off of it. But don't back off of it at this point, keep moving forward. I haven't been checking our numbers every day like I was at one point, but I did check. And I mean, we're almost zero now. I think we had three new cases recently. And so the numbers really are down, but we do know we still have COVID in our community and in our state. So, and you asked about the variants. I don't think they really know yet what's happening in this area, but, you know, just constantly watching. But I will check with Dr. Bonds or if there's someone else at the Health Department that can share information with us. And Ms. Powell also mentioned that the state of emergency is going out. I, since we've been in here, there was an, I saw an announcement online that the state of emergency will end June 30th. And so they're looking at how some of the laws will change, like, you know, right before the pandemic, it was against the law to have face covering. So that law will likely go back into account, but they'll have to talk about, you know, some people are still going to want to wear masks, so you can't really enforce that law. So there are a lot of questions that have got to be answered about that and how that will affect us in schools as far as mask wearing and everything else. So stay tuned, we'll keep you informed as we know it. Okay, I'm here to talk to you about policy, which five years ago, when I did this, I thought it would be the last time I would ever talk to you about policy. But here I am. Sure, you're welcome. So how I've gotten this big stack of paper that I have, because I still like dealing with paper, is I did attend the BSBA policy contact meeting a couple of weeks ago. And so I have all of the updates that they have recommended. Also, there were policies, and I went through every policy that Charlottesville City Schools has to see the ones that had not been updated within five years, because there is a state law that says every policy needs to be reviewed every five years. I found several that were being reviewed this year by BSBA and others that had not been reviewed in the last five years. And so I made an assumption that they were just going to be reviewed. But after some study by a couple of board members, I've realized there had been some updates recommended by BSBA within the last five years that had not been entertained by the board. So we may want to look at some of those. Also have one stack is information about the policies regarding transgender. I know that the Department of Ed has come out with a model policy. BSBA's thought on this, and I gave you a copy of something BSBA has, was rather than have a separate policy on this particular issue, they made sure that all of their harassment and retaliation and all of those policies that would apply to code 22.1 dash 23.3 would be covered in other policies. So it's more of an umbrella approach rather than having a separate. So I've included in one of the handouts that you had, how BSBA is handling the eight areas that must be done. And then finally, SHAB has been working on their wellness policy. And when I first saw the wellness policy, as usual, it's very, very extensive. And SHAB has done a marvelous job in working on it. But those of you who've been on the board a while have heard my sermon about what is policy? What is regulations? So I went through and pulled the procedural regulations part out, put it into a separate document. I've left everything in there that SHAB had from the policy part to the regulation part. And SHAB did have a couple of concerns about that. And I have been in conversation with SHAB members. And in one place in the regulations, I have included an item that they would like to have at a certain point, but is not required by the state. So I've made sure I've outlined that. I'm not saying what it should be or shouldn't be, but I wanted to make sure the board knew that what SHAB is recommending in that one item is not required by the state. And it will certainly be up to the board to make that decision. So those are the different parts of tonight. And I have them in different paper clips and I would be glad to go through this in any way that you would like. Or you can tell me it's all okay and I'll.
Pardon me? Thank you, Dr. Kraft, for kind of going through them and, and sending in your notes ahead of time. And thank you, Dr. Baptist, for doing such a thorough job and looking at these. We appreciate that. I don't know what the will of the board is as far as, I mean, I think we should definitely go through the policies with revisions or how's everybody feeling?
I will say some of the ones with revisions, the main revision may have been the addition of that code 23.3 dash three in there. So sometimes it's the, the wording of the policy may not change, it's just update for legal references. But when I do policy, I don't change one syllable of what's in there without bringing it to the board. So I won't bring anything that even just has legal references changed.
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess my preference is that, that, you know, if there's anything major to go over those, you know, that's, you know, I mean, I don't think it.
I didn't really see that any of the revisions in that one stack were major.
Yeah.
I used to, when I would bring it to you, would bring a major and a minor.
Yeah.
And this was mainly in response to any, you know, law updates or changes. I know there were some changes and I'd have to look in here to see it about being able to participate virtually with school board, but that may change too, because that, some of that was dealing with the continuing state of emergency and with that changing. I know that is a change how they're figuring that, but to me that had more change than just about anything else. And that was regulatory, that are legislative, so.
We didn't have any choice in that at all, anyway. Yeah, that's what I saw for a lot of them. I mean, I saw Sherry notes and, but I didn't have any comments. Sure, I don't know if you saw some things that you felt that you wanted to go over as a board, but you know, you know, I don't have any comments or questions on the changes.
Yeah, I, I guess for me, this section was, was quite clear. I thought you did a really great job of explaining exactly how each one was revised. And mostly what I looked at was some typos and some confusing language and things like that in this section. So I, I didn't really have, you know, questions about the policies themselves. And I appreciate you making those changes like overnight.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question. I mean, I did, I think I have a few corrections to some of these. Again, it's just typo stuff, minor stuff. I'm happy to type them out and send them to everybody. So we don't need to go line by line or page by page. So I don't know what the will of the board is. Know what? You, you're okay with me doing that?
No, you don't have to go line by line if it's.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, I mean, if there were minor things, like I, I think I did find a chairman left in one of them. I know you missed one, I think. You know, so things like that where that she was correcting, I'm happy to, to type that out and send it to everybody so that we have it for next week and you can see it. Is that okay for those types of things? Okay.
There, there were a couple, the, under the policies that needed the five-year review, it seemed like there were a couple of things that either could be eliminated, deleted, which I listed in my notes, there was, and then there was one about the alternative schools that I noted that that was also in this, in the first section of policies with revisions, that the language was revised. But then when we got to this section, it was the same, well, it was the old wording. So I just thought maybe this was redundant with that.
All right, so I will, in that one, I will make sure what, from what you gave me. So I'll make sure that what was in the revision is what has changed.
Yeah, and that, that was all just, so, you know, if there are any that, that can be deleted now, that haven't been looked at, but we don't need them, then that would be good to do.
One policy that if y'all don't mind, that I just wanted to maybe have a little discussion about, trying to flip to it right now, I believe it was on page 29, and this was in the group that required or had revisions. Had to do with school lunch, school lunches and how student.
That policy is EFB if I'm correct, if it's on lunches.
Yes, poli, yes, policy EFB.
The policy is to be revised.
And on, in ESB, it's on page 29. I, I just, I guess I personally just struggled a little bit. And I know that, that some of these policies and the, the language, you know, have come from BSBA, but just in general, I guess it started with parents or guardians whose student has a negative balance status must either pay cash value for the meal each day or bring a lunch from home. And it just has more to do with the fact of that, that punitive nature. I mean, and we as a division, I mean, if, and within the policy, within the context and for the public, you know, I think we do make a statement that, that no student, you know, will, will be called out on this or, or anything like that. But I just feel like if, if they're not paying their balance and, and, or if they have that negative balance and, then they are required to bring their own meal, I mean, there's obviously something going on.
When it's policy, I did spend more time with this one than some of the others. And Ms. Powell may have commented because she and I both looked at what BSBA recommended with what we already had. And I know she brought in Mr. Jones to also talk about it. So I don't know whether you have any input on this comment or not.
And I'm not sure that my comment was coherent, other than the fact that I think, I guess, okay, another question is, so when a student, when we end the school year and we have a negative balance, an unpaid balance, I mean, my understanding is that that balance is cleared somehow. I mean, I know there's some community members who step up and provide some relief to kind of zero that out. But again, I just, I don't want any student to, to not be fed.
So there are two, two things, I'll take the second comment first and then I'll backtrack to the other comment. So with regard to negative balances, it is required to be part of the national school, you know, meal program, that all of the balances are cleared at the end of the year, the negative balances. And for whatever is not covered by donations or anything like that, the school divisions, our budget balances the school nutrition fund and makes it whole with regard to unpaid charges at the end of the year. That's a requirement to be part of the program. It's part of the funding that you transfer, that you have in the, the budget to transfer new, to nutrition. Part of that is an allowance to cover whatever that is at the end of any given year. With regard to the other, about the language, and I confess, what you just read, it isn't what stood out to me from the work Beth and myself and Carlton just did in this policy this year. But what I would, as I was, yeah, the, the fact is there's, when you look at that statement in the context of the rest of the language in that policy, there's a lot more language in here that speaks to the fact that no student who goes through the line will be denied the, the meal. The only thing that is, that, that, the only limitation of that is additional like à la carte items. So, you know, I think it's, that language is intended just to put some responsibility to say, look, if you're not paying for your meals, then the expectation is that you would bring your lunch or pay in cash and, and not be allowed to charge until it's resolved. Because what happens in school nutrition programs is that if there are no limitations or no statements regarding that, no safety, if you will, then the charges will just go up, 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 up. And that does in fact happen because of the language that's in there, that no student will be turned away. And the, except for, you know, our à la carte items, the full normal meal, no substitute meals. And the board adopted that language some years back. There's no PBJ sandwich or, you know, cheese sandwich. It's the, it's the regular meal and there's nothing said and that, that the student does get that. So even though that language is in there, and maybe it could be improved, it is part of what BSBA, the standard, we would probably check, like Dr. Baptist said, before we change language, you always want to run it through legal if it's part of what's the recommendation is. But it's, most of the language in there far overshadows that in what it's saying about how no child will be turned away. There would, you know, you wouldn't be able to distinguish a child who had a negative balance from one who doesn't. All of that protective language is in there throughout the policy.
It does. I, I mean, and I did catch all of that, but I mean, this, this, out of all of the policies just kind of was a gut punch a little bit more than, than some of the others. And, I mean, is this something that, that?
We haven't charged for lunch in 16 months. So everybody is getting free lunch right now, if, no matter what, in our schools. And as long, and that's going to happen at least next school year. I think policy, until next year, if you believe that we need to keep or change something about that policy.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, so maybe we bring back that particular policy next year at this time, just to see if it's more relevant, because right now it doesn't feel relevant, given that we are offering free lunch through the end of next year.
So in my hearing, not to make the other changes in there or?
Well, why don't we take a further look at it? We can make the changes this year, but also take another look at it next year, if that's the will of the board.
That makes sense, but also understand, Ms. Flores, that the policy reads this. I've been a part of this school division since 1980 and I've never known a child, regardless of what their balance was not, i.e. negative, not to be treated with respect and being given a lunch, with the exception of the à la carte issues. So something that is in writing could be there, but the practice has been, we all will be.
Thank you for that. And I'm not questioning our practice per se. I'm just, you know, purely speaking to, to what we're looking at here in policy. All right, any other? I did have a question about that one as well. It did say at the bottom of the same policy, we're talking about that the Charlottesville City School Board is responsible for maintaining records that document. That the Charlotte State City School Board is responsible for maintaining records that document compliance with this policy. And as far as the records, you know, whether food isn't allowable and a competitive food. How do we receive those?
Not, you mean, how does the board receive those?
Caught me in the mid-sip over there. So that is referring to fundraisers. That that piece of policy, I believe, is the record, isn't that the part? Oh, yeah. So that's for the. I'm sorry, I thought we. That is the, yes, we absolutely have all those records in our school nutrition department. It's our procurement records. And. They have been heavily audited. Like recently, in the past two years, I've had, we've had no less than two, and not because of anything that was done wrong. Just because our number can, one was state and one was federal audits. We also. Oh, we can just, I can provide audit reports to you from. I thought you were asking if it was audited. Sorry.
I'll come in and look at it in some of my free time.
We have that via. The nutrition office, but it's also part of the audits that are done through the finance department. Nutrition is frequently what the subject of what they call single audit. Which is every year, and I see Ms. Perrier nodding because she's part of the audit committee and she's familiar with this. Every year, there's. One or more programs that are singled out for single audit, meaning that the auditors do a very deep dive on it. Title one, title six B, school nutrition, those are done frequently. On top of that, we've had separate audits from the state nutrition department and they come in and do separate audits as well that do a deep. A deep dive in this area. Happy to be, happy to share those reports with you. The only thing that have ever come back on our audits, though, by the way. Were the free and reduced lunch issue where we gave a student free lunch that should have gotten reduced lunch. Ms. Perrier's nodding because she remembers that as well. We had one case of that. And I think we may have had a second one since then, but those are the only findings we've ever had. And the record keeping is certainly part of those audits, though, which are referring to the policy. But there's no, been no findings, but happy to share the results.
Thank you.
I am scrolling desperately to get to K and A J.
Law enforcement.
Yes, I feel like we talked about changing that. And I just wondered what the status was when I looked at the chart. It looked like we, thank you, I'm at one ninety-three now, so I'm almost there. Let me see what changes. Okay, so you said that basically we could do one of two things there. We could delete it because of the S R O thing. So the chart said one thing.
What page, one ninety-five?
So this policy can be deleted with the removal of S R Os or the remainder of the policy can remain is what the chart says. And then there's no changes on the. Means are very limited changes.
I didn't change, I didn't change anything because I wanted to bring it to the board as is, even though we are removing the. School resource offices, I still wanted you to see what was there and get your direction of do you want it removed? Because we can't, or did you want it to remain?
And I think Ms. Powell, yeah, she and I spoke a little bit before the meeting and, yeah, if you could update the rest of the board on kind of the work that's being currently done, please.
So with regard to the changes with the safety model. The first draft of a new agreement, and I don't even know that it will be called an M O U because of S R Os not being ability. It may be called a protocols document because that's what Toronto called theirs. But over the past several weeks, we created a first draft. There's been an internal review by stakeholders. Who were part of, by staff members who were part of that large committee. What I'm doing before I involve other members from that large committee, community members who, those in particular who expressed a strong interest in this document. Is it's actually in the school board attorney's hands right now. And part of his review is, is I have specifically asked him, in addition to checking all the code citations. To check it against our policy and come back with the recommendations for what the best, you know. What his recommendations are for adjustments to our policy specifically in light of the document that he now has in his hands. So I'll bring that back to you. And then, once I get it back from the attorney, that's when I would. The next step is going to then be reviewed by the members of the larger committee. There's at least three who expressed interest in being part of this process. And then depending on what comes back from then, that would determine whether or not we get additional review from Wade Anderson. And then, then, once we've done all of that, then we start the collaboration with C P D by the end of the month is my goal and deadline. So that they can start to collaborate around that document with us.
Then with that. Policy, you know, going through this process, then replace. The one that we're talking about now. This would update it.
So there are multiple policies that I'm sure Mr. Anderson will need to look at in light of the document that's been sent to him for review. And so outside of this policy review cycle, we just didn't want to come to you with recommendations and then have him make other recommendations surrounding those policies. So. We would come back to you with. As part of that whole item with that new agreement with the police, the policy adjustments would be presented to you at that time as well.
I would ask that we take the policies out of our. Take those specific policies out of the packet for voting on next week.
Kim, you don't think, sorry, that won't be done, the process that you're working on currently, the review for Mr. Anderson and then. The other commit, committee member, that won't be ready by next week, correct?
No, I don't think so. And there is the part where this will need to go to the police department and there, and it'll have to be reviewed in light of their. Now, I doubt very seriously anything that would come out of that. Process of looking at the new agreement in the context of their policies, requirements, et cetera. Would ripple back to change anything that, you know, Mr. Anderson recommends for our policies. But. No, I don't think he would have that by next week. There's a chance. There's a chance, but it won't have gone through. I still didn't want to get it to. The other committee members that are non-staff members for them to start looking at it. And I mean, we're going to be moving at a pretty fast clip. When I send this out, now that we've got a document that everybody can provide input around. That's been involved previously. I want to keep things moving because I do want to get it in the hands of C P D for their review to start by the end of this month.
Thank you. And then, so all of that happens before it comes to the board, correct? Or is there a board member on that committee that is part of that with you?
So we did have two board members on the committee, and I would be happy for either of them to be part of that next step now that the staff working group has agreed on a first draft. And there are some holes that we need Mr. Anderson to fill in, to be clear. I really, I talked to Mr. Henderson about that. I felt like. There were some areas where I needed his expertise before we got more people involved with reviewing it. But certainly, I'd be happy to share it with. Board members at the point where it comes back from Mr. Anderson.
I mean, I definitely don't want to slow, slow the process down, but what is the will of the rest of the board here?
I would just like to say that this is related specifically to K N A J, K N A J, something that we've been talking about for more than a year and. I don't think that this policy alone will be the limiting or slowing down factor. It sounds like there's a lot of other things. I, and I just want this policy to accurately reflect. The practice which you guys are working on right now.
One thing I would note, a couple of the sections in the policy are going to be in this document because I've been serving on that committee too. So it might be that for the short term, we can remove the part that has S R Os in there, but we're talking about serving papers at school. That's going to be a part of it. Development of programs, that's really what we're doing right now. Is doing that. The things in there that need to be reported are going to be in there too. So portions of this policy are still going to be in effect. So I think. You need to keep something in here for the time being about working with law enforcement agencies. We can remove anything that says S R O. So we have a policy and then when this other work is completed, we can come back and bring a revision of that policy.
Well, what I was suggesting is that we continue to keep the policy that we have and not take out or make any changes to it until we have the revised policy. I feel like making a change right now and then making another change in a month or two will also send the wrong message. And I want to be clear that. The. Many, many items in that policy do need to be changed. That are out that simply removing S R O from it is not going to. I think reflect the will of the board.
But but it seems like we can at least remove that part because we don't have S R Os. We've made that decision. And so, you know, why not just take that out and then leave the rest as it is?
Because we have nothing. To that other, first of all, we, I think, making a change, you put revised there. And. My concern is that if we put revised as something that happened just this month, and we make a change, you know, like. It might just fall through the cracks and not come back again. Because it's been revised and we've talked, you know, it's very hard to keep track of all of these things. We've been talking about K N A J for a year now. And so I'm just concerned that if we decide to make these changes, they will not. We will not see this policy because we were going to make the changes, but we actually want a firmer, stronger stance. In K N A J than just the S R O changes. And we've been talking about that. And I just feel like. That even though we don't have S R Os, we don't actually have an M O U right now either. And so there's a lot of things in flux about that. And it's just really urgent that before school starts, we approve a policy. But it has to be accurate in reflecting the practice.
So for now, I've got to keep until we have the new program and then revise.
Please, that would be my suggestion.
How's everybody else feel about that?
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, you know, I would just take out the sentence about the S R Os, but I guess. It doesn't, you know, it's not that big a deal because I guess we are going to have a new policy. Before school starts.
I mean, there is, so that first paragraph, but it, there is, you know, it's embedded in a couple of other places in the, in the last paragraph too, I believe. So we'd have to look at that.
Well, much of the first paragraph will still remain about talking about. Presence of parent or guardian for any. But it, there'll be the wording, be some wording changes in there, but the gist of that are the major part of it will remain.
I just really don't want to base anything on how a law enforcement agent feels like that needs to be changed. Oh, there's just a lot of things. I've already submitted my suggestions for changing this policy. And none of that has been reflected in this, these changes, which of course you weren't even doing that.
I was gonna say.
So there's been, there needs to be some changes to this.
And I added some changes as well. I'm ringing the bell now.
Thank you.
You're ringing the bell now about the law enforcement officers having access to the children. And so we talked about that. And we did send in drafts. I can go back in the email and resend them. But are we saying we're going to come back to the policy before school starts to revise this?
Definitely, and we have to do that. So maybe I can ask. Either you, Ashundra, Jennifer, to find those revisions that you have sent, I believe, to Dr. Atkins and resend them to Dr. Baptist and Mr. Henderson. So that they have copies of those, please.
Okay, I'll go back and let you know what I find and C C you on it. Thank you.
And if I may, it may actually be appropriate for the board's legal counsel to be part of the discussion as we wind up this process because. There are just a lot of considerations with regard to our intent and mission and purpose in these changes. And what law enforcement can or can't, is mandated or not mandated to do. So we have a lens around all of this that's very much. Our perspective, our, you know, our perspective on the school side. But there is the legal side of this and the law enforcement side of it, and. It goes beyond my expertise to maybe necessarily bridge all that. We're in that, we're just starting that process right now. We've kind of conveyed a document that we think is a fair representation. It was. Jody Murphy, Patrick Farrell, Beth and myself, Beth Chuck, Eric Izzari, some other school administrators. We all huddled up and just got a draft done. And those were all folks who were involved with the original committee that are, you know, C C S staff. We felt like there's some holes and things in there that we needed to tighten up before we asked the members of the public who were part of that committee. To get involved. And please get back to me and let me know for that next step after it comes back from Mr. Anderson. As to if you do want any or all board representatives to start looking at the document at that point. I don't know, but you can just get back to me on that. But right now, the folks who, from the committee who expressed expertise and a willingness to participate in the next review. Those, that's who we're going to be sending it out to. And so just let me know what the will of the board is as far as your involvement at the step after it comes back. Mr. Anderson.
My goal is to make sure that we have everything in place that we need by the time school starts. So. The sooner we get that to, say, people who care a lot about this and who would want to make sure that their. You know, their concerns are addressed, the better, so that we can make sure that it's in place by the time school starts.
I would.
Other policies?
Yeah, I would like, if anybody else has any other policies, but I would like you to, if you would. If we could talk a little bit more about the wellness policy, the SHAB. I didn't quite understand what you were saying, and I'd like to look at that. And Dr. Craft, you're on that committee, correct? So if you have any input regarding that, I'd appreciate that, please.
Well, you know, I think that what Dr. Baptist was saying, our, our policy is very thorough and comprehensive and. And many, many, many pages long. And it, what Dr. Baptist did was go through it. And make sure that the things that were actually in, that, that the actual policy contained. Policy statements and then the, the things that were more regulations, like implementation and more specific details. Were in a separate section. So that the policy itself was just more. It was clearer, it was more. You know, it wasn't like forty pages long. It was like seven or eight pages long, like most of other wellness policies. So just separating policy statements from regulations. Details, that's what she did. She went through it, and I think that was needed. I think I really felt good about that.
So were there changes, inherent changes to what was put? I mean, is the rest of the committee had input on this and are they okay with that?
Yes, yes. Yeah, this was discussed at the last SHAB meeting.
As Ms. Craft said. The document that you have, the smart regulations. Was embedded in the document that's marked policy. So where I saw language that looked more procedural than policy. I just totally lifted it and moved it. And the only thing I had added into or anything within the policy. Was so that you would know where, what, what SHAB would like to do. Is beyond what the state requires us to do, just so you would see it. And you can, I mean, what you do with the passing of policy is one thing, but if you look, and I don't even know what page of the policy it is. I think it's page eleven where it's talking about physical education. SHAB has in there that Charlotte State City Schools will provide two hundred minutes per week of physical activity for all students. And that's not including recess. And all I did was to add, have a goal of doing that. And put a note in there in all caps, just so you would know that the state only requires a hundred minutes per week for K five and. For the other grades. And then looking at master schedules, and I've even spoken to Mr. Henderson about this. It would be almost impossible to include two hundred minutes of P E. Within a weekly schedule along with, you know, the reading and math and all of the other things we do. We certainly want all the amount of physical activity we can do. But it will not fit in the schedule and we don't have the capacity within our P E teachers to do each class at that amount. So if you pass the policy, my recommendation in here has been to have a goal of. Rather than to say that we will definitely do that. Because I don't think, even though we want to do everything that SHAB would like. Because I don't think, even though we want to do everything that SHAB would like for us to do because SHAB has worked so diligently, I just don't think we've got the capacity to do that.
So what you put in parentheses there in bold, that was just for our information? You're not leaving that in the final draft?
When it, when the policy is finally passed, if you pass it at 200, I will take this language out. Or if you pass it with, has a goal of, we, I'll still take the bold out. But I just, I don't want it to be left in here that Charlottesville City Schools will do 200 when that is something I don't think we can do. Saying it is a goal, and that's the way it has been in the state standards, is to have a goal of a certain amount. If a school can do it, that's awesome. But to say that you've got to do it would really be a hindrance without adding to the school day.
Do you remember when we had a wellness policy back in 2011?
I do.
Yeah, you were intimately involved. So do you think that this changes the, what we approved at that point?
Um, I think the, the policy and the regulations have been changed to include some of the newer thoughts in student wellness. So I don't see anything that is bad in the policy or the regulations. You know, I know SHAB's job is to have the, the best wellness program we can have. And we all would like to do that, too. We just have some barriers to keep us from doing some of it. Now, I will tell you, one concern that some SHAB members have is that we all know that one of your duties is to pass policy.
Yes.
And we have a policy says you have given the authority to issue regulations to the superintendent. So the superintendent generally issues the regulations based on the policy that you pass. Some of the members of SHAB would like for there to be something written into the policy that says no changes will be made to the regulations without their approval. And I have tried to say that we don't generally make changes to regulations without involving an advisory committee, if one had been, you know, working with us on this, and that the administration certainly does not have the will to just go in and change regulations against what SHAB would like. But the ability to change regulations still is in the authority of the superintendent and doesn't have to go to any board, whether SHAB, whether CET advisory, whether specialized advisory, whatever. You know, it's the job of the advisory committees to give us advice and then for it to be followed. So I've tried to, you know, tell the members that I've talked to on SHAB, where we're not trying to do anything to hurt them. We would not just, you know, the minute the policy is passed, we definitely would not just say, oh, let's forget the regs. That's not what we're going to do. If SHAB wants the regs, we're going to do the very best that we can. But we may have to look at it, you know, in conjunction with all of the rest of the things that we're doing. And I'm sure while Mr. Henderson is here or with the new superintendent, we'll make sure that everyone understands the importance of SHAB to this school community and importance of the work that they have. So we're not going to try to hurt our children or the families by just making a change to SHAB. But that is a conversation I've been having in SHAB.
Are there any other policy things that we want to look at? Or I appreciate your advocacy at the SHAB level. Obviously, we typically, as a school board, try to let the superintendent create those regulations based on our policies. Some of those policies, we do ask that the regulations come back before us, at least. I assume that any regulation that a superintendent would promulgate would probably be best served by them going through the SHAB. So I just feel like a savvy superintendent knows to go through the SHAB.
And we've been looking at this since I came in 2005 and have worked with SHAB since 2005. And we've never had anything in there that said that SHAB had to approve regulations or anything. I mean, that's, when you look at what the, what your role is and what superintendent's role is, we're only following what we do with all the other policies and regulations.
I think that's the correct way to look at it. And, you know, I think legally, the superintendent does have that right. So I don't think we can really change that in this policy.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this? I mean, do we need to speak to this specifically and how we want it? Or is everybody comfortable with the goal of, I'm moving it like that? With the goal of, the way the wording was, as far as the goal of 200 hours instead of?
Minutes.
Minutes, yes, sorry. That's some tired kids.
I think that's really, it's a very smart move to make. You know, because I think, as Dr. Baptist was saying, that it may be very hard to implement that, that, you know, the 200 minutes in all situations. And so I think putting it as, as an aspiration or a goal, I think is more appropriate and protects us a little bit more.
I think when we passed this, though, in 2011, there was like a, the physical activity really meant also recess and meant being outside. It wasn't PE, for example. It was a more broad sense of what is physical activity. And I have to say that it did increase the level of recess and physical activity, especially at the elementary level. And so I can see the benefit of having the policy be that we would like, again, our students to have the goal of 200 minutes a week. And I don't know that we need to necessarily identify what the state requires. I don't really, I don't have thought about that. But I do think that having the PE and having the recess kind of with the goal of having some giant number, especially for elementary kids, is important. If we do not state it, then the default will always be more content, more instruction, and not the physical activity. We've seen that, we know that. I mean, we even, but even though the research says that physical activity is so critical. So I just humbly say, maybe the goal is that, and we need to actually try to find a way to achieve that.
Ms. McCabe, but we've been working on the master schedules within the, or master scheduling guidelines for the principals. And we have been using for PE, an average of 100 minutes and then adding recess for 30 minutes a day. So that's 150 plus 100. So between the two, that's 250. Where what this is, has been asking for is 200 minutes of PE plus 30 minutes a day of recess to make a total of 350 minutes of physical activity. And back when 2011, that you were speaking of, when it was broader, the goal was 150 minutes of physical activity. So that included PE and recess. So now with what we currently got in guidance for principals would be 150 a week. So that would, that's, that's really more than the state actually requires because the state requires recess but does not give an exact amount. So we're giving 30 minutes or proposing 30 minutes of recess each day. So we're actually going a little bit beyond what the expectations. Would we love to do more? Yes, but it would take the extension of the school day to handle that plus all of the other academic and intervention and SEL and all of the other competing factors that are all equally important. That's the problem.
Before I retired, I was working with elementary teachers in defining the verbiage of structured and unstructured play. And then that, that line of thinking is that structured play is someone who's structuring those activities. And we think of that as our physical education features. But we also think of unstructured play, where teachers are either having their kids in a playground setting, either structuring it somewhat, but in a more informal manner. And if we, if we talk structured or unstructured play, we are really close of getting to the goal of 200 minutes. And I think we should never just say for certain, but I think if our goal is 200 minutes, my guess is after we do it a year and come back and report on that, we're probably going to be close to that or a little bit above and still maintain the right amount of time for reading and math and our content areas. What I'm hearing principals say during this past period of time when they were dealing with the framework of virtual learning and then moving back to face-to-face, they actually incorporated a little bit more structured play. And they found that the students were more attentive, attentive to what they were doing when they came back in the classroom. And so I think even the principals are beginning to focus on the necessity of unstructured play. So if I think if we just, if, I don't know if the board wants to use those, those terms or those words in our policy, we can easily put it in our regulations. But I think that keeping it as a goal of 200 minutes, look at where we are at the end of the year. I think we're close. I'm just calculating in my head right now is that I can see us easily getting to 180, 190 during the course of a day at the elementary school. But, but there could be ways where we're getting really close to two. But just to say we're going to do this amount of minutes for recess and this amount of minutes for recess, I would rather us see how we, we use play, which, which is a term that actually comes out of early childhood and kindergarten and is actually being utilized now for our principals for what we're finding out is that it's really good for all our elementary kids. That's my thinking.
Parents really want. I think that's what our parents really want and our, and our students benefit and our teachers benefit as a result. So thank you.
Well, I think for our purposes this evening, I think we're talking about that wording of just using the term goal. And it seems like that's, you know, that we're comfortable with that. So that's what we, that's what we need to decide that if that's okay. And I feel like that's really appropriate.
Goal is just more flexibility.
Yes, it does. And I think that's helpful.
I think if some parents or community members have comments on this wellness policy that they should email the board, because we are not approving it tonight. It's something that will be approved in a week. And if there are changes that you believe strongly that need to be made, then this is the week to, we have public comment for this, these policies. So feel free to email the board about it. But I do think the goal of 200 hours is perfectly reasonable.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson or Ashandra, any comments from you? Okay.
Thank you.
No comment.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments about any of the other policies? We're good.
I thank you, I thank you to you for all the time that this took. I know it took a lot of time.
Glad to do it. And while I'm recommending following VSBAs' approach to the transgender policy, I want to make sure the board is okay with that.
Curious, I mean, I did, I did read through that and I did take note of all of the changes that, you know, were made throughout the policies. Can you or someone speak to how that translates to what we're doing within the division as far as registration forms or other forms, as far as identity, pronouns, those types of things? Have we, have we made those changes?
That's something that's in progress. And there are going to be times that we miss one, like I missed one. But the SBA's approach is to look at the eight areas that are required by the policy and make sure that all of our policies meet that, rather than having just one policy for one particular group. If we have the umbrella policies and if every policy protects every group, then it doesn't really make one group stand out more than another. All of them are protected equally. So that was the, their thought behind it. And they were able to show in our current policies with the addition of some language at places that I've shared with you, how each of those eight areas has been covered. And to me, it really sounds like a good approach because we don't want to say just one group of people is going to have these protections. We really want all of our students and all of our staff to share them equally. And when you start doing it for one versus all, it can sometimes, you miss something. Yes, ma'am.
I have one experience regarding names. And I just wondered, like, if we could, because if you, you can't legally, like, I have been told that you can't change what's on, like, Power School or to reflect the name that you have chosen until you are legally changed your name, which, of course, if you don't have parents who are supportive or if you don't have, you know, I don't know, the $26 or whatever it costs to do the court costs to get your name changed, then it's a challenge, right? Like, you know, so I, I was hoping that we could get a little more flexibility around what is on your record as your name. If it wasn't a legal, I don't know if that's possible. I just was hoping to support our students who are identifying a different name but who have not legally been able to change their name because they're not grown, but are, but everybody recognizes them as this particular name. So I'm humbly asking if there's any, any way to support those students. And if there's not, that's fine, if it has to go this way. But I would just like us to double check to see if there's a way to kind of put their, you know, because it's very upsetting to, like, see your birth name and not your chosen name.
I will check on the flexibility, but I know in some of our systems, that's almost impossible, even if it's not about gender identity.
Clearly.
I can't get Beth in my personnel records. I am June in personnel records. So, you know, sometimes it, whatever that legal name is on social security card or whatever is what the name is. But I will check to see if there's any flexibility.
I know that on some recent work applications that I've booked out with my daughter, that there, it seems to me I'm seeing a lot more of, you know, your legal name and then another, like, preferred name. And so that, that is just automatically given. I've seen that a lot lately. So I don't know if we, if that could be factored into some of this. You know, or at least hopefully our teachers are sensitive to that and asking, you know, so that, and I think most of them are, not all. But I would be supportive of that.
I will check on it.
Let's say that the teachers have been incredibly supportive. That's not the issue. It's just kind of seeing your name on the report card or seeing your name is kind of startling.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns regarding policy? I think we're good, and I will send you those few little things. I'll send them out to everybody so they can see them.
And once you approve them, I will go back and get all the formatting correct. I've, I've messed the way it is now. I apologize, but I will get it correct.
Thank you. Right. Oh, we are now at superintendent search updates by me. So I don't know if I need to turn around. I do have a little bit of a PowerPoint. And thank you to the clerk for printing me something, so I don't need to cream my neck. So thank you. I do want to just kind of update everybody. Our survey for our superintendent search has, has been up and running since May 20th, I believe. It continues to be available and open through Friday, tomorrow, June 11th. So that survey is, is there for anybody in the community who would like to provide feedback and answer a few questions. Today, yesterday and today, boy, I'm not sure what day it was. So yesterday and today, we've had multiple community forums, some in-person options, some Zoom options by the team that is working with us from HYA. So we've had meetings with multiple community partners. The invitations went out. We, we made in our work session a month or so ago, a pretty comprehensive list of community partners as we all brainstormed. And Ms. Thacker and other people have been working hard to send out invitations to them. So community partners have had opportunities, teachers and staff had opportunities. There have been some open meetings. We did have an in-person meeting available as an option at Buford last night. I believe there was a CHS today for teachers and anybody who wanted to meet in person. And there is also a Zoom open meeting that is available Saturday. So anybody who has missed prior meetings or invites, there is an open meeting. There is a Zoom link that is available on the website. And behind me, I believe that you can click on and join. It's a wonderful opportunity. My understanding is they're taking general comments and then, you know, sitting down and making notes. So the notes are not attributable to any one individual, but they're just getting general themes. All of that information is being gathered and then they will come back next Thursday to meet with us in person and present at our board meeting next week, all of the information that they've gathered, which will then kind of create a profile for what this community hopes to see in our next superintendent. So that, I hope that you all can join and that will also be publicly available on the website for people to view as well. Didn't even look at my slide. Did I miss anything? So, yeah, next steps again. So next week, June 17th at 5 o'clock, we do have another board meeting where we will be taking action on policy. But also the superintendent leadership profile will be publicly presented, which I just said. August 4th, the board will be meeting with HYA to receive a seminar and some training on interviewing, question determination as we, and the slate of superintendent candidates will be presented to us. And, and then moving on into August, and this timeline is kind of open as we're not sure how things will flow, we will have the first round of interviews conducted by the board. The board then deliberates and chooses finalists. I think we're all leaning towards, and we can all discuss this a little bit more, about having a confidential community panel that might participate in the final interviews. And then the board again will interview finalists and we will identify our finalists, which would include a comprehensive background check. And the first week of September 2021, we hope to be announcing our new superintendent. And we are grateful for Mr. Henderson and all that he is doing currently because we know he's working hard and we appreciate you, sir. So I want to thank everybody who was able to participate and everybody who participated in the survey. Please share it out. It's not too late. Again, all of the links and the option again for Saturday are available and we appreciate Dr. Drager and Ms. Monday for participating and being present and meeting with all of us. All right. That is it. The next item we have.
Madam Chair, before we go to the next item, if you don't mind, Beth Chuck is in the Zoom and she can respond to the questions that Ms. McKee and you addressed regarding the names. Because right before I left, we were working on that and that's why I thought we could do that. So she is going to address it now, if you don't mind her.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Pat?
Hello, can you hear me? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to give you a little bit of update about the questions that you all had about flexibility and the Power School profile and also on the registration forms. We've added several new questions that are in keeping with the state's guidance on transgender students that also in the last couple of years, we've made some changes gradually that support, as we've said before, all students. There, we have a whole variety of students, just as people on this board use a different name other than their legal name. And so for years, we've been asking if they would like to indicate a preferred name. And the difference is that the state is really encouraging school divisions to put that preferred name as widely and as broadly as possible before people so that teachers will not have to unlearn a legal name and then relearn a preferred name. And that when parents get mailings come from us in the mail, it won't say "to legal name." It will say "to preferred name" because we know our students and we want to treat them in the way that they want to be recognized and honored. So that's one change that we're making and that's a change not only in the registrat- well, that's not so much a change on the registration form, but the way it's, that preferred name is disseminated throughout Power School and other programs, that will be new and that is again, in keeping with the state's guidance. A few new things that are on the registration forms are the option to declare pronouns and the option to declare gender identity. And again, the state's guidance is very specific about how schools handle legal name and legal sex. Those are recorded and captured from various, for some very specific state purposes. But the state's intent is for school divisions to keep that sort of on record in a more private way so that people who need to know that information will know that information. And that the, the, the way that the child identifies and what's just to be acknowledged is seen in a more public way by teachers, excuse me, staff members, other people throughout the system.
That's amazing.
I'm like moved. It's amazing. So, yeah.
And truly that, that's, I think that's the will of the community in Charlottesville, but it is all in keeping with what the state has kind of set out as the model.
Thank you for that update. That's great. Yeah, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a board response to written report. And it's a report specifically about the playground for Walker. I would like to ask that we consider this and kind of look at this report. I don't know if Ms. Powell wants to come up or if you want me to kind of go through the steps of this. My understanding of what has happened here with, with the Walker playground. So again, I think everybody is aware of that there was a group that have worked to, and this was all based on, I think, the students really voting and wanting to have a playground at Walker Upper Elementary School. And so a group of parents set out to make this happen. It's been in the works for a couple of years. I know that some parents were involved and they got together with the city to look at if and what it would take to happen. There was private funds or philanthropists, you know, donated funds to it. I believe a construction company was tapped and to work with them. There was a hiccup, I believe, that had to do with ADA access from Crow Pool to the actual site, which was an unexpected kind of big financial hiccup. And then I think there was a change in the construction company's availability or ability to work with them. So then that kind of left the group searching for another group to do the work for them. And so with all of that being said, there was a lump, you know, sum of money that they needed to come up with then. And I think that was mostly for the ADA work.
Entirely correct. The, so the ADA accessibility issue is not for the Walker students to access the playground, but it is for the public to access the playground if you're parked at Crow Pool. And that was an unexpected expense that came on. The report that Krista Bennett provided is really comprehensive. It gives almost a play-by-play and all of the details about how much money has been raised, which is quite a bit, where exactly the money is going, and then what the remaining differential is. And what happened is that after the ADA issue came up, they did go to the city and because she had secured a matching grant of $15,000 but needed the $15,000 match because I believe the total amount needed after the ADA issue came up was $56,000 and some change. And so with the $15,000, the city did take action and this is all in the report earlier this week, I guess Monday. And they are, you know, to provide the $15,000, so then that's $30,000. And then that leaves, when I was looking at the report, it leaves $26,000, I think $814. I'm going from memory here, but it's in the report. And when I looked at that dollar figure and I consulted with Renee Hoover, that's well within the range of funds that we typically have available at the end of a fiscal year when we're balancing all the accounts and closing out the year. Those of you that, you know, you're familiar with that process. When I saw that $27,000, I just, I just thought it was worth really drawing to your attention because once we know that that money is secured and available, which it could be from our year-end settlement, that enables that Walker playground to be installed and ready for those students when they come back in the fall because the equipment has been purchased and delivered and it's sitting in a secure location behind a lock gate, behind Crow. And if installation is paid for, I mean, we are, they are, I say "we", truly that the community has gotten it to this point. It's this close.
So thank you for that.
For your consideration.
Yeah, so I mean, I saw this report too and had spent some time just chatting with Kim and I knew she had talked with Renee and so I wanted to just open it for discussion to the board to get your, your thoughts on utilizing the year-end funds to kind of help make this happen for our students for next year. And I think Kim is available, Ms. Hoover is available for questions if we have any questions, I believe. But I don't know for sure if Ms. Bennett is available. You know, if there's any questions, but anyway, I'd like to hear what people think. It would happen so that it could be installed this summer and ready for students in August.
Yeah, the pre-construction meeting was actually last week because again, they're so close and that we don't, the team did not want to miss the opportunity to get it installed. I attended that pre-construction meeting. I also wanted to mention that the reason this is coming to the board because this amount of money in the context of year-end funds is not necessarily a big deal, but this project came to you all as something that would not take funding from the school. And so it's very important that if any funds go to this project from the school board's budget that you all, I think authorize it because it's not the way the project was originally presented to the board. That said, this ADA accessibility issue, not for our students, but for, well, for our students, but if they're coming from home or from the direction of the Crow Pool, everyone can access this playground during the school day as is. But fixing the sidewalk issue was a $50,000 plus issue that that group did not foresee when they embarked on this process.
Do we need a motion? Because $26,000 is separating us from, from getting this?
I believe that the suggested one would be something to the effect of that the board would authorize staff to, to contribute up to $26,000, whatever that exact amount is in year-end funds if they are available to facilitate completion of the Walker playground this summer. It was, I believe it was, and I see Leslie raising her hand. I believe that if you wanted to act, it would be something like that because we want to be on record that the school board acknowledges the contribution and it needs to be your decision.
When will we know what our end-of-year funds look like?
We, we know from projection right now that these funds will be available. I mean, you have to understand, we usually have a favorable variance of even a fraction of a percent is well over $26,000. And we've looked at a number of things, some additional radios that we need to get for CHS to implement the new safety model. That's $3,000. We're checking these things off that are needed. And because we've closed as part of, as part of handling the budget for the, for the school board, Ed Gillespie used to say it's like landing a jumbo jet on 29. I, my analogy before I ever came here was always like, you're trying to stop a high-speed bullet train on a railroad track, which is your revenue, before you run out of track. There's a little bit of an art to it. At around May, all of the departments and principals, there's a freeze on their spending. They have to put their allocations in. At that point, it becomes a division budget and we're making decisions to stop the train, land the plane, so that we're balanced and have some favorable variance is always the goal. I mean, just, you know, you can't, well, as you know legislatively, we cannot be negative, right? But it's hard to stop it precisely. So there's always this little variance around 1% or so. You see that every year when we report the closing. We are far, looking up now, we are three weeks from end of fiscal year. We know that the funding is available in year-end settlement funds to address this as well as a few other needs that we know that are smaller. Again, this project was never, when it was presented to you, was not presented as something that would take any school board funds. So you need to be aware of this.
Of course. My question is, if we take this $26,418 and put it towards this before the end of the year balances, would we then subtract that from our end-of-year balance and then split that 50/50 with the city?
Correct. It does mean, when you make this decision, the $26,000 is not available for the, for the revenue share process. That, that's also part of the settlement Ms. McKee was speaking to. And I can certainly call Ms. Hoover to the podium if you want more details about that, but you're familiar with that. The first, this is going.
Would it be counted as spent money rather than?
It's counted as spent. It doesn't fall into the split. That's right.
Let's do that then.
And clearly the city is in support of this. They've, they've put up the $15,000 already to enable the match or they've authorized that, is my understanding.
So we're getting a $200,000 playground for $40,000 of taxpayer investment. Okay. I would authorize that we do that.
I mean, and just as a reminder too, as far as the process, you know, that this, you know, so this, I believe, started in 2018 with the Walker sixth graders participating in, you know, some design thinking sessions. You know, they had community feedback sessions facilitated by the architect. There was online surveys that received responses from 429 community members, including 360 Charlottesville City School students. So I mean, there was a lot, there was a lot of engagement, you know, and a really great process to get us to this point. And it's really exciting to think that our students, I know we're so close, that our students could have that, you know, when they start school next fall.
A rising fifth grader, so I feel very invested in making sure this happens at some point because so much of what we do is happening a long time from now and none of these kids will get the benefit from it. So that's something can actually be benefit, somebody could benefit from it starting in the fall.
So did you make a motion?
I would like to, if we, I will move that we authorize the expenditure of $26,000 up to $26,418. I would authorize. Okay, I'd just like to make the motion that we authorize spending up to $27,000 for the Walker playground. And thank you very much, Walker playground people.
Second.
And for the discussion, questions?
I think it's a great idea. I'm, I'm excited that it's this close and that we can do this.
Yeah, I want to thank Krista Bennett for kind of heading this up for years. She's been working on this. And I know she has a lot of the volunteers as well, but she's been spearheading it.
Yeah, I think this is a great thing to celebrate. Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Johnson behind me, Lashandra behind me somewhere.
No questions.
All right. All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We are now to our, our final opportunity for comments from members of the community. A reminder, please, to state your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes, please. And Mr. Kama, do we have some, anybody?
Yes, let me just scroll to them. There's one person with their hand up and it looks like it is Krista Bennett. So Ms. Bennett, you have three minutes. You should be able to unmute at this time.
Okay, great. Thanks. Well, if I could have unmuted 20 seconds earlier, you would have heard me screaming with delight. So thank you so much, board. I am beyond words grateful that you have voted to provide the final funding for a playground for Walker. I am officially listed as a construction activity operator for our land disturbance permit. So if you could just get me a hard hat, we will all be set.
That little cushion and money should help you.
Yes, I, I will, no, I will not spend. Yes, I, I, well, no, I will not spend that on a hard hat. All of this, one hundred percent going to the playground. I mean, I could talk about this all night, but I also want to address the changes that Dr. Baptist has made around the wellness policy. I am a SHAB member, have been for four years. I am the person, or at least one of the people, who is raising the concerns that Dr. Baptist mentioned are coming from SHAB. I am talking with some other SHAB members about what we want to do about these proposed changes. Dr. Baptist presented them at our last SHAB meeting, but we weren't asked our thoughts on making the change where the wellness policy is divided into policy and regulations beforehand. And I'm not sure that all the SHAB members realize the fact that that was going to have, which is, in the past, the school board has approved the entire wellness policy. Now, it will approve the policy part of what is created, but the power over what Dr. Baptist has now made regulations will be held by the superintendent. And I started to ask some questions around this while she was presenting it during the SHAB meeting, but I didn't want to take up our whole meeting. And now I am taking the time to talk with other members about how they feel. And it may be that SHAB decides to push back on this in a more concerted way. So, I just wanted to let you know that this is some of what is happening behind the scenes. And I really appreciate Ms. McKeever highlighting how wise it would be for the superintendent to get SHAB's approval, which was my suggestion to Dr. Baptist. And I believe I understood that, Ms. McKeever, there correctly. As a parent, I found it can be really hard to know how to advocate for our kids. SHAB is one of the best ways for parents to influence a district, and I don't want to see any of its agency taken away. One final thing, Dr. Baptist said, "We're not going to try to hurt our children." And those kind of exaggerated statements make it a lot harder to talk about this, because it's insinuating that even questioning this process means that you're accusing someone of wanting to hurt children. And another thing that she's told me as well, the superintendent and school board have the same goal anyway. And no one doubts that we all want what is best for our kids. I really do believe that about every school board member and every CCS teacher and administrator. But we do have different ideas about what that means, and we need to include as many voices as possible to get to the best solutions. And SHAB is one of the ways that we do that, and I'll be doing everything I can to ensure SHAB has a strong voice. All that said, thank you again for the playground. Really, really excited about this. And hurrah that we made it through this year. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Give it a couple of seconds here, a couple of quick seconds. All right, we're gonna move on. And now we are to comments from the board. And so, I don't forget that there are people behind me. I'm gonna start with Lashandra, if, if you're, if you have any comments, please.
My only comment be added for a follow-up is that we're talking about transgender students and the pronouns and nicknames that are used. We might want to include some of the counselors in the discussions, because some of those changes in the system, you know, are, you know, we're keeping up with state policy, but a lot of the work has been taking place. And so, like the thing with the nicknames and the systems and pronouns in the classroom, if we want more information, we should talk to the counselors and the principals, because there is a lot going on, on the ground, that we were doing before, you know, the state law mandated it. And I think that was my only comment.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. And, you know, I just want to start by saying, you know, this is going to be my last meeting, school board meeting as the school board rep, as school year's ending. And I say that, not only, not, not to get a round of applause or anything like that, but I say it because this is one of my last chances with this type of position, maybe that I will be able to advocate or speak on some of these topics that should be spoke about. And, you know, I really hope that over these next few months, that there is that advocate on the board that can speak on what I feel is right and what this board needs to head in direction of. And, you know, my last best, I could say, you know, comments-wise for what's been said today is, you know, about the, you know, virtual and, you know, the schedule for next year, which has been on my mind the entire meeting. You know, with, with virtual learning, I just really believe that if you can make it so the vaccine is available for, for choice, like you can choose to get it, or you can choose, okay, you know, I've been good this, you know, this far. I got my mask, you know, I'm social distancing, I'm not going out that much, you know, I'm good. If you can make that choice, I think you should be able to make the choice of virtual or in-person. There are so many factors with, you know, that, that we have to consider, that it's just really not fair that parents or, you know, students and parents and their families cannot make that decision. You have families who have family members with disabilities, with health issues, and we're asking them to, or in other words, forcing them in some grades to come to school with no other option and putting their family at risk. And I don't feel like that's okay for us to make our families feel like that. And I spoke on this with, in the March meeting as well, when it comes to really working together and not making this a one-person decision or one-group decision. This has to be a decision when it comes to, you know, school next year. It has to be a community decision along with the board, along with staff. It has to be a full group decision. You know, we have teachers who are very frustrated. We have parents who are very frustrated with not having their voices heard, with just the direction of the board. And it's, we, we have to, we have to figure out a way to, to help their frustration and to get their word and, and make them feel included in, you know, what we do. And that's why I love this position, because I've been able, you know, been able to do that. But the board should be more inclusive in, you know, allowing the voice of staff and, you know, communities to be heard, because I, you know, stu, student reps won't be here throughout the summer. So, throughout the summer, there has to be that connection. There has to be that, you know, somebody has to be that bridge between the community and the board. So, and, you know, surveys, you know, I know we love to use surveys. I've, you know, done that in the past in December with the SROs. But surveys will not be enough to help bridge that connection. You know, we have to be able to reach our community directly and in a more broader way. So, I think we just, we gotta come up with other ideas, more creative ideas to get, you know, our community involved. And I think we just, we need a better plan on to fall back on, because there is no guarantee that this pandemic will continue to lower. You know, we have a very optimistic view, like I said, but that could all change in the next couple of months. Not everybody is vaccinated, not everybody, you know, not everybody is safe. So, we just have to make sure that we have a plan that if everything does go south, we can fall back on that. You know, that we do have virtual learning to fall back on. So, if we need to keep everybody virtual again, we can do that. So, I just wanted, you know, put that out there, that we just really got to make sure that we bridge that connection. And going into next year, I really, I really, really believe that there needs to be an option, both pre-K through two and in high school, for our families to have that option, to protect their families, to be able to feel comfortable with their child and what they're doing, to be able to have that choice to do virtual or in-person, like they have the choice of vaccine or no vaccine.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, again. I'm just gonna start at one end. Who's ready? Ms. Purrier, Dr. Kraft? Let's start with Ms. Purrier.
I'd just like to say it's been an honor to get to know Mr. Johnson. He and I have emailed and chatted through this last quarter. And I'm just very proud of the types of students that are part of our school division. Although his term may be over, I think that he is a young man that we will be hearing a lot from, whether he is speaking during public comment or whether he is writing us through email or other forms of communication. He has a very strong network, and I think that he and his colleagues make a lot of sense. I hope that we, as a school division, will continue to be sensitive to the needs of all of our families. I think that we are doing the best that we can. It does not mean that there's not room for improvement. And I hope that Mr. Johnson and his colleagues will continue to express themselves in order that their voices are heard, because they are the individuals who will be doing what we do now, because none of us around this table will be able to continue to do this in perpetuity. And he is the type of student that we pride ourselves on here in the CCS family. I would like to thank everyone in this division for all of the work and the efforts that they have done during the past school year, whether you are a parent, a student, or an employee within our division. It has been a heavy lift. Everyone is tired, but everyone has always risen to the occasion when asked. And as a member of the school board, I am very impressed with that. And I'm honored and privileged to have had an opportunity to be a part of this division during this pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. Purrier. Ms. McKeever?
I wanted to advocate for volunteers being able to come back on site next year, as mentioned by Ms. Broadhurst of the JABA. Do you think volunteers are community's vital role in our school division? So, I really appreciate her comment. And just a reminder to the extent that it's safe, that we are looking for ways to incorporate more normalcy, to the extent that's possible. I think... Wanted to say thank you to everybody for the incredibly quick graduation. I'm just so proud and how we are a model of efficiency when it comes to our graduation. I mean, we could have been there later, like obviously, we were there for a very long time, but, and the graduates were too. But the ceremony itself only took fifteen minutes, five-zero. And I just feel like that's a model we should continue to emulate. And I'm so proud of our students and, of course, my own child and, and our staff for all the hard work. And that heat was pretty, pretty extraordinary. So, thank you, everybody, for sitting through that and for all of the support that we had to make sure that people had water and transportation to their vehicles. So, yeah, graduation, very cool. I hope that we continue to look at the virtual model, K through two, in particular in the high school. But also, I was confused, and I didn't ask this question about algebra at Buford. That was confusing to me, why we didn't have algebra at Buford as potentially one of the virtual classes. So, I just think that there's some work to be done. I expect that there will be, and it's gonna be an evolving process over the summer. And I definitely would hope that, to the extent that families like Mr. Johnson's need to be reached out to, and it's not just his family, if there's a lot of families in that, that our principals and staff are reaching out to those students. And I, I am exhausted, just like Ms. Purrier said, we're all tired. And I can't imagine if I was teaching this whole year and doing everything else that we, we expected the teachers to do. So, thank you very much to our staff and our teachers and our families for, you know, holding on with us throughout this school year. And I hope everybody has a really safe summer.
Great.
I just wanted to thank the students, particularly Mr. Johnson, as he very eloquently spoke on his position on a lot of different things. And, and I know that we, like Leah said, we haven't heard the last of them, last of him. And also for the graduates that graduated last Saturday, congratulations and best of luck for you all in your future endeavors. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Bryant?
First, I want to say to Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for your willingness to serve as a student rep on the school board. You've done an outstanding job, many things. There are good things coming for you in the future. I want to say thank you. I'm proud of you. Continue to do good work. You're in the neighborhood, so whenever you have questions, concerns, I'm just right around the corner, sitting on my front porch. So, congratulations. Also, I want to congratulate the class of twenty twenty-one. Congratulations to all our graduates. I'm hoping that you will go out and make your mark on the world. Also, I want to give a shout-out to especially our parents. I'm not gonna individually go into descriptions, because I don't want to prolong things, but our parents have done an amazing job of keeping our students on task this year. Virtual learning was challenging for some. I know I had a nephew who did virtual learning, and his mother stayed on. And for others, many did quite well. Amazing teachers, our amazing instructional assistants, amazing administrators, our amazing school counselors at the elementary, middle, and high school. I know you all had a tough job. Our mental health counselors who piggybacked with the school counselors. I also want to make a shout-out to the Walk staff at Charles for High School. I'm quite familiar with that program. And for many students, WALK was a program that enabled them to, to make that step toward graduation. And thank Mrs. Poe and her staff members for doing an amazing job for their WALK students. And nutrition staff, who provided nutritious meals for our students throughout the year. Our custodial staff, who go far and beyond the call of duty in ensuring that our buildings are safe and clean. Our bus drivers, who safely transport our kids to and fro. And last but not least, our students, thank you so much for all the hard work. And our community members who served as that village. It takes a village to raise a child. So, many of our community members stepped up in one way or the other to ensure that all of our students were successful this past year. I want to end on a concern that I heard earlier tonight, and I'd heard this before. The young lady who spoke earlier during public comment for the lack of diverse staff and teachers of color. As you know, I served in, in this school district for many years. I think when I came on the board several years ago, there was a group of African-American teachers back there taking pictures. And as I was leaving the convocation, they were there taking a picture together. And that was the first time that I had ever seen, in my years of working for the school system, that diverse group of, of teachers, African-American educators. And I didn't quite get all of what she said, but the majority of what she said, her concern for lack of diverse staff and teachers. And I took note of that, and that is a concern for me. So, I'm hoping that we will continue, being that we are looking at everything through the lens of equity and diversity, that whenever we have an opportunity to hire a person of color, that that person be given an opportunity to move forward in the hiring process. And this is a discussion in the community. So, we need to take note what this young lady said. I'm, I'm not accusing anybody, but when she said it, it caught my attention. So, I'm hoping that we will continue to work to move forward in ensuring that, not singing out African-American educators, but making sure that they are also given equal access... but making sure that they are also given equal access to moving forward in the employment process.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Yes, Dr. Kraft?
Um, I would like to um echo uh thanks to first Mr. Johnson uh for being an incredible uh voice on our school board. And I believe you're you're still gonna be around and maybe uh you can reapply next year. We'd love to have you back. I think um uh you've been very valuable uh to us in in hearing, hearing your voice and uh maybe take your concerns very seriously. Um, so I'm thinking, why, what a year we've had. And I'm thinking uh of how many huge initiatives we have going on right now here. Um, we have, you know, it is exhausting. We've worked so hard. We have, you know, on top of our, all of our return to learn issues. We have a reconfiguration. We have our superintendent search. We have the renaming of the schools. We have, um, you know, there's just so much. And I want to just take a minute to uh thank our central office staff, all of you who are here or even if you're on the screen. Um, it's been such a heavy lift. You've had so much work to do. And um I can't imagine how we would be really uh functioning as well as we are without you. I was asked in my interview with the um this superintendent search firm about uh what are our strengths? And one of the first things that came to mind was our, our people, our central office staff. In addition to, you know, our principals and our instructional staff, but I think that you guys are just rock stars. And um I really appreciate all the work, all the extra work and the heavy lifting that you've done this year. Um, and to Mr. Henderson, just officially, um, thank you for doing this and coming back and giving us your heart and your, your head. And uh I know it's a lot, uh but it means a tremendous amount to us. And then finally, you know, I think to the community, um, I wanna say that these big initiatives are, they're community initiatives and we really need you. I know we're asking a lot of you. We're asking you to be in focus groups. We're asking you to be on committees. We're asking you to tell us what you think. Um, and this is something, I mean, it's a lot of work, but we really need your involvement. Uh, and if we're going to do the big things that we want to do, if we're going to have, you know, if we're gonna dream big and have uh, you know, big visions for our school division um to take us to the next level, um, we need the entire community to be with us and to be supporting us in doing these things. So um I know it takes time and and effort, but um we really, we do need you. So please stay with us. Um, please, uh, you know, I know, fill out surveys and come to focus groups, come to meetings, contact the board. Where, that's why we're here. Um, so um anyway, I I do hope that we have, it's gonna be a busy summer. Um, I hope it's a good summer, but it will be a busy summer and um, yeah. Anyway, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Um, yes, I thank you, Mr. Johnson. I won't repeat all of that, but you are, um, we appreciate you, we value you. Um, and your opinion matters. So thank you so much for all that you've brought to our meetings. And and I do hope that um we continue to hear from you. So thank you again. Um, I wanna congratulate also the class of twenty twenty-one. Um, thank you to Dr. Um Irizari, all of his staff, everyone who worked to honor our graduates. Um, it was a great celebration. I loved the fact that it was right here um in our stadium. Um, maybe could have started an hour earlier um just to to beat the heat a little bit, but thank you. It was wonderful um to everyone. Um, gratitude um to all of the teachers, staff, the principals as we navigated through um this past year, a year like no other. Um, I I hope we don't see a repeat. Um, but I do, you know, think we're not quite out of the woods and there are a lot of unknowns. Um, I think uh we've learned a lot. Um, and there are some knowns that we can walk away with. Um, I I know that uh the teachers care, the staff care, that, you know, everybody worked really hard, um, whether it was face-to-face, whether it was virtual, to show up. Um, and um my wish and hope for us as a school division um i- is that we together continue to work to make sure we can meet those kids where they are um when they return in in whatever form that looks like and whether they are face-to-face or virtual. I mean, I think um we need to be prepared. And and wherever they are is okay, and it's perfect in in this moment and in these circumstances. And um we need to celebrate them. And I know we as a staff do do a great job of that, but I think we all need to remind each other of that. I wanna thank the families, um also the partners, um but mostly the students for showing up in whatever way you could, in whatever way that looked like. Things are gonna be different next year, but I I feel like we can pull together and and we can, um, we can get through this. I hope that everybody can embrace the summer break, um, get some well-deserved rest. Um, for those of you who have signed up to um help out with summer school, thank you. Um, I hope you get some rest as well. Um, you're appreciated. Everybody's appreciated. Everybody deserves the break. The the students are rock stars, you know, and and I think whether they know it or not, and and I think maybe we do. I mean, they've learned, you know, and whether it was standards or whether it was just life lessons and how to get through day by day or how to juggle, um, watching your siblings or or um whatever that may look like, we learned a lot of um valuable and powerful things. And I know that we're gonna take those forward with us and that that the students will take them forward. And and in my opinion, much more important than a standard, um, you know, um on an SOL assessment. Um, but again, that's my opinion. Um, know that we, the board, will continue to work hard over the summer with Mr. Henderson and the staff, you know, to ensure that we're ready for fall twenty twenty-one, Walker students. Um, I'm excited for you because you get to start with some, with a wonderful new playground. Um, and again, I hope more than anything that we are all ready to uh meet and greet the students, you know, come August where they are and support each other in that. So um, thank you to the board and staff and everybody for supporting us. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Appreciate you again. Um, that's it for me. And I will turn uh it now over to you for superintendent comments.
Um, first, I'd like to give a shout out to all of our CHS graduates. Um, I wish all of you the very best now and in many years to come. Also, would like to thank the staff for your hard work, your careful planning and your perseverance and getting us through this roller coaster ride of starting with virtual planning and development and implementation to changing gears and then going back to a face-to-face model. Your efforts are amazing and um we truly appreciate what you, what you've done in helping our kids succeed. And lastly, to thank the, the, the families of our community for your uh flexibility and patience in working with our teachers and our schools and maintaining um some expectations that we have, that your child will succeed. And um we look forward to bringing some sort of uh knownness, if that's such a word, to this coming year. I know we've dealt with a lot of unknowns um this past year and it's um, I'm looking forward to making sure that we have some stability um so that we start the school year um where we're on the right foot, moving forward and uh making sure that everyone is aboard to succeed the day they start and walk through those school doors. Thank you.
Absolutely. Dr. Odie, our unsung heroes, Lord, please.
Thank you. As you all know, uh, we have enjoyed recognizing several of our great staff members this year, starting with our VIPs earlier uh in the fall. And then we've ended the year recognizing many of our unsung heroes. And these folks are those folks that are, that are exemplary support people, our cafeteria workers, uh bus drivers, nurses, instructional assistants. There's so many different people that work sort of behind the scenes, but really do an amazing job. And we could not do the work that we do to support children without these great people. So we, we have several, we finished our unsung heroes for the year uh with this last Monday's uh four not recognitions. But I'd like to share uh the last several weeks with you, starting, and we don't have pictures for everyone, um but we do have their name and their position. So we have Derek Lee, a custodian at CHS, Anne Sandridge, who is retiring, of course, this year, a school nurse here at CHS, Kathy Showalter, instructional assistant at the hospital education program, Victor Witcher, custodian at Burnley Moran. Those were from May tenth. For May seventeenth, we have Moss Dix, instructional assistant at Jackson Villa, Roger Inge, custodian at Greenbrier, Dale Megget, custodian at Walker, and Henry Rush, bus driver for Jackson Villa, excuse me, for Johnson, Walker, and CHS. For May twenty-fourth, Deborah Fields, bookkeeper at Beaufort, Waverly Myler, instructional assistant at Johnson, Karen Warren, instructional assistant also at Johnson, and Carolyn Washington, custodian at Walker. For June first, Tracy Casares, admin, admin tech at the hospital education program, Donna Churchman, instructional assistant at Greenbrier, Rachel Hoff, another instructional assistant at Greenbrier, Annette Kaufman Horner, admin tech at the Division Annex. And our final group of unsung heroes, again nominated by their colleagues, for June seventh, Shamira Banks. That's small print there. Um, we don't have, maybe we didn't put the location for these folks. And I don't have it with me. Shamira Banks is at Walker, Tammy Clements at Clark, Jay Smith at Beaufort, and Ellen Mueller Greenbrier. So that rounds out our list of, what's that? It does take a village. Thank you so much, Leslie. Uh, we certainly have enjoyed recognizing our great people here in Charlottesville City Schools and we look forward to continuing with this next year. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Um, and now we have work session wrap up. Dr. Baptist? You microwave, microwave. Oh my gosh.
I'd like to see microwave. From the gifted presentation, um more of the data broken down uh demographically, uh getting the gifted data into the equity dashboard, looking at gifted data from prior years and also by breakdown and also think about how to measure the outcomes. Uh, the slide presentation about returning to learn in the fall, make sure it's on the webpage if it is not already. Uh, in August, have Dr. Bonds or someone else uh similar to her to talk to us about the status of COVID in our community. Have the nutrition port, reports available um for the K and A J policy. Make sure we have that ready before the beginning of school or any of the others dealing with that topic. And then although Beth Chuck did answer the question about flexibility, also talk with the counselors and others to see if there's anything else that could be done.
Thank you. Um, and then up for upcoming meetings, we have um a school board meeting next Thursday, June seventeenth, um, right here, five o'clock. And that is it. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you much. Thank you, everybody.